Let us pray. Most gracious, most high God, we celebrate you first before we can ask for anything. We acknowledge you for being not just the God of a second chance or a third or a fourth, but just being God all by yourself. You woke us up, you gave us rain, much-needed rain. And then, God, you know exactly when to stop the rain, to keep it from being a hazard to us. So we say thank you. We thank you for these august body of leaders, these city leaders, individuals that hold different titles and different positions, but all have the same heart, and that is to serve this wonderful city. So we pray that today's meeting is a time of great peace, that everything that is on the agenda has already been approved by you. We pray, Father God, for our council president, that as he moderates this meeting, Father God, he would do so with much integrity, with leadership and boldness. For everyone that's sitting on the panel in front of me, we pray, Father God, power and peace. We especially pray for them, Father, because they have a character like Bruce Rudd that's sitting in front of them. And whenever he's on the panel, God, we definitely need you in our presence. So we pray that today is a day of love, a day of peace. We celebrate you in Jesus' name. Amen. Love you, Bruce.
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we have had a special request from a new county supervisor from the county of Fresno to greet the council. And so at this time, Supervisor Nathan Magzig, will you come forward?
Good morning. My name is Nathan Magzig, and I'm a supervisor of the 5th District of Fresno County. Council president and members, I want to thank you for giving me about 60 seconds just to say good morning to all of you, and also to say that I represent Clovis and southeast Fresno and Sanger, but I also am one of five members on the Board of Supervisors that represents all of Fresno County. And I look forward to working with all of you. Yesterday, I spoke with our chairman of the Board of Supervisors. And for those of you who were not able to be at our swearing-in, one of the things that he stated and he wanted me to relay to all of you is he's going to be working very quickly to extend a hand to your mayor and to all of you so we can find ways to work together and be effective for the citizens of the city of Fresno as well as Fresno County. So we look forward as a county to work with all of you. And I just wanted to come here today to introduce myself and let you know that if you need anything, you can call me directly on my cellphone, because I think all of you have it, and really looking forward to today and tomorrow.
Thank you, Supervisor, and we look forward to working with you. Member Baines.
You know, I just want to thank you, Council President. I just want to briefly say thank you, Supervisor Magzig. I'll tell you, I believe that I speak for several of my colleagues on here to say that we look forward to a very healthy, productive relationship with the Board of Supervisors. We believe you all are a breath of fresh air, and we thank you for your presence here today, reaffirming that. So I did get a chance to make your swearing-in, and we're very, very happy for the election of the board.
Thank you. Member Capriolio.
And I join in that. Congratulations. It's been a long, winding road for all of us up here, and congratulations on supervisory opposition. And I think that your message today kind of started back with you and me and the League of Cities trying to get Clovis and Fresno together, and we were successful in that. And Bebra Brandal reached out to Madera, and now we're reaching out to really the key components to our community in the Central Valley. So I think we're going to have a great future working together for the greater good of the Central Valley. So welcome, come back any time, congratulations, and you look good today.
Well, thank you. My wife dressed me, for the record.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, it's ceremonial presentations, and I have one. I haven't done one in a while, but this one is the proclamation of National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. If our friends from the EOC would come forward. Sure, come on forward, our friends from PD as well. I'll start off by saying that I was having a text message debate with someone this week about who my favorite British prime minister was. And when you're a complete dork like me, these are the kinds of conversations that you have on text message. And this person was all about how wonderful Winston Churchill was. And I said the best member of parliament was William Wilberforce. And if you don't know who Wilberforce was, he was the point person that ended the slave trade. And then that was finally eradicated in the British Empire in 1805. And so there's a great movie about him. It's called Amazing Grace. And has anybody seen Amazing Grace, that movie? It's fantastic. And it talks about the challenges that Wilberforce went through to end the slave trade. And so he was, he and his colleagues were among the first to stand up and to speak out and to be activists and to risk everything for this change that was needed and to right this injustice. And we have a legacy of slavery and human trafficking, and it exists in our nation, in our state, and right here in our city. And so this was something that, when I came on board, I was educated about it. I didn't know what was going on. It exists in my district and right in front of my home on Blackstone. And so we're very blessed in our community to have a forward-thinking and progressive police chief, and we're very blessed to have good people working for him. We're very blessed to have the EOC and the, it's the Central Valley Against Human Trafficking Project that they've been working on, and so many of our friends in and out of the church who are doing so much to minister to people who are on the street and to convince these folks that this isn't the way and to literally work for freedom and to free people. And so I'm so happy always to help advance this cause. I'm so, I'm no Wilberforce, but I'm happy to work when I can to bring folks together, work to enable them to have the tools that they need to actually go out on the streets, online, whatever they can, to stop this, because it is an injustice, a cruel, cruel lifestyle for everyone involved. And they need not just our work, but they need our prayer. And so with that.
Yeah. Clint, council members, I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time and the moment to acknowledge that this is an important issue to address in our city. And I've been reflecting a lot, as I shared just a couple of days ago with the Board of Supervisors as well, that 2016 was really an incredible year in terms of activism around the issue of human trafficking in the Central Valley and in Fresno City as well. In 2016, we saw the opening of the very first safe house, which has been dedicated specifically for adult victims of sex trafficking, and that's with Breaking the Chains. We also saw PD and others be involved in investigations to take down traffickers. We saw the Justice Coalition and Child Welfare and others that are sitting here in this room, some of our partners, Central Familia, Marjorie Mason Center, be involved in fighting against commercial sexual exploitation of minors and the implementation of groups like My Life, My Choice, which empower young women to educate others of their age about what this is and how to get involved. We've also seen incredible legislation, historic legislation, that's been passed this year by the state to provide more provisions for victims and survivors and also hold traffickers accountable and to hold buyers of sex accountable. And with Central Valley Against Human Trafficking Project and our partners in the six counties that we serve, we saw a million dollars in funding come through the state. And for the first time, we've been able to provide really wraparound, comprehensive services, which has been so exciting to be a part of. And I just have to say that I'm so proud. I'm so proud to stand with colleagues and individuals from every sphere that really believe that we are a part of a fight that we're winning and that we can do some damage. And I'm so proud to stand with survivors whose voices, to me, are the most important in this movement that we need to listen to. Back in the spring, we were alongside with law enforcement, we were actually doing a removal, and oftentimes we talk about those as the term rescue, right? But rescue oftentimes implies that there is one helpless group, and there is another that's in power that's helping that individual. But rescues or removals or interventions, the survivor, the victim, actually is the one that's most active in that moment. It's that moment, the defining moment where they say that they're going to step out of that situation. And when they wake up the next morning, life is not just the same as it always was before the trafficking experience. They have so many dark voices to silence, a long journey in front of them of recovery. And as advocates and activists, we get to be a part of forging that pathway for them, but they have to do that work on their own. There were several individuals that we've gotten to be a part of their lives in this past year that just got jobs this past month. And for us, that was a huge, a huge celebration, to see that they're able to provide for themselves, they're able to provide for their families, and that they are moving on in their life in a way that they're a role model for others. And so with that, I actually, I want to ask the rest of our group to come forward, because I want everyone to see how big of a team we are here. So those of you that are in the audience, come up. And I'm going to hand it over to John Doe. I met John about a year ago when he shared with myself and another one of our case managers his trafficking experience. And he's truly been an inspiration, because his story kind of flies in the face of a lot of stereotypes as well. As a male survivor, he has been a voice to other young men who have been impacted by this issue. He's doing incredible work in terms of advocacy and his education. And he's just going to share a couple of words to all of you about the importance of that.
Thank you, Melissa. So as Melissa stated, my name is John Doe. I was a survivor of human trafficking, specifically labor trafficking. So my story's a little bit different, only because it dealt with, it's not the type of labor trafficking you see in hotels or like housekeeping. It's more the type of labor trafficking where I'd be working certain jobs that you would see me every day. You know, I'd be working food service, I'd be working grocery, I'd be working the types of jobs that people would, customers would see on a daily basis. So I was born and raised in Los Angeles County. I later moved to Santa Maria, California, where I met my trafficker. And it was through a family friend, but in that time, I basically got to know him as a brother, or I got to know him as a friend who later turned into a mentor, and I later viewed him as an older figure, you know, an older brother figure. You know, a lot of, I came from a household where both parents worked. I didn't get a chance to see them that much, only on the weekends. So when you have somebody placeholding the presence of your father and somebody that's mentoring you, everything that they say, you take it to heart. And when you learn to, when you rely on somebody, you learn to depend on them a lot, a lot. So it got to the point where almost everything he'd say, I'd do. So I received a scholarship to attend UC Irvine. And while attending UC Irvine, I basically was struggling with school only because of the academics. And at the same time, this trafficker moved to that same area. So while he moved to that same area, he would continue to give me the same advice, but now the advice changed. It went from, hey, you should do this, to, hey, you need to do this, or else this is and this will happen to you. The type of background that he described himself being was he worked as a veteran. He worked as, he told us that he worked as a Department of Defense employee, and he worked for the Air Force. So in my culture, I come from a Pakistani culture. And where we come from, when you talk and listen to somebody who is authority, you tend to listen to them more, and you tend to not question that. So through that time where this verbal abuse started, now the threats were getting more and more heavy. So it went from, you need to do this, to, or I won't talk to you, to more like, you need to do this, or I'll have one of my men come and kill you. So in that time, at Irvine, there was a little bit of turmoil that occurred, and as a result of it, I had to drop out of Irvine. And, you know, I spoke to the individual, and there was something that he gave me where I ended up being drugged, and I woke up in Santa Clara County. So I spent the next two years of my life working 18 hours a day. And again, these are the jobs that you see on a daily basis, right? So the type of schedule I had was I'd work 18 hours a day, I'd sleep for two hours a day, and I'd get beat up for four hours a day. So it was through the help of a coworker that helped me escape. And, you know, I thank God every day for that. And, you know, I want to talk more now about like the services that I've seen and services that I'd like to see going forward. Melissa did mention a lot of great things that were done last year, but I want to, hopefully I'd like to see more continue to progress for this coming year. So coming back, normalcy, going back into normalcy, especially when you're going through a traumatic situation, is very difficult. You need to get counseling, which is something I didn't want to do. As a male, wanting, being told to go to therapy, both physical and emotional, was something that I didn't see fit. You know, I didn't see that it was the right solution. But I would literally be dragged by my mom by collar, and like I finally made it to these counseling offices. And education was important to me. That's like the main thing I want to stress here. If it wasn't for education, I honestly wouldn't be here. I'd probably be abusing drugs or something. You know, education was my salvation. And the type of services that I feel that are lacking, what is the education in terms of where do you, what do you do with a victim when he's going in between counties? So if you're victimized in one county and you're living, you want to move to get away from those flashbacks and triggers, and you move to another county, communication is a big factor. So when you're dealing with law enforcement, so the first law enforcement I saw was San Luis Obispo County and their police department. And from there, they had to communicate with Mountain View Police Department. But as a victim, when you have to retell the story over and over, especially after it happened, it tends to get difficult, and you tend to shut off after a while. So what I would like to see is at least a three-way Skype or some type of service where multiple agencies can be present after they're notified that this victim moved to a different county. In addition to that, the same goes for victim service organizations as well. So for those that are trying to get treatment and trying to get counseling, both physical and mental, having in between, having that communication where you only have to say it once or twice. For two counties, it's very efficient so that one county doesn't rely on the other, and the solution can get done. Services now that I see that are, I see that are working is, as Melissa mentioned, Breaking the Chains. You know, the Marjorie Mason Center, these are great services for victims, and it's something that other counties in California should get on board, where on-the-job training's offered, shelter's offered, like on-demand counseling, everything, you know, and daycare service as well offered, you know. These are the types of things that, if these are the types of services that will help get a victim back up to code and back to normalcy, this will help them push further toward education. Now the services, just to wrap it up, the services that I would like to see going forward is I would like to see legislation being worked on where there's a grant or a stipend in place for victims of crime that are wanting to pursue a degree in criminal justice or a college of social sciences. Because I personally believe, from my experience, and I'll give you a little bit of what I've been doing, is I believe that victims and survivors of crime make the best advocates for any type of field, you know. So what I do right now is I'm very thankful, after attending Allen Hancock College, I've transferred to Fresno State, best decision I've made ever. And I now, I'm finishing up my degree. I'll be done in four months, finally. I'm on that six-year plan. And so I'll be finishing up with that. I'm applying to law school, I'm waiting to hear back. Yeah, and I'm looking to become a criminal prosecutor. I'd like to work at the, for the district attorney's office, hopefully here. That's all I see why I'm here, I'm just trying to get a job. But yeah, I mean, I mean, as I said, like, I'm very thankful for these opportunities that I've had. I'm thankful to the Fresno County Board of Supervisors, thankful to Melissa Gomez and Fresno EOC. And again, victims and survivors of crime make the best advocates. So hopefully you give us, continue, we continue to get these chances going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, round of applause. Thanks for sharing that. It takes, I can't imagine the kind of energy and courage it would take to share that with us. Chief Dyer, it would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't offer you the microphone.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for, council, for taking time out of your agenda to recognize something that I believe has been overlooked for many, many years. And I have to tell you, from our perspective, law enforcement got it all wrong for many years, as we were dealing with the issue of what we thought was voluntary prostitution, which was really human slavery and sex trafficking. And about eight years ago, Sergeant Chastain was really the leading force in our department that started convincing people to see this differently, that we need to do everything in our power to rescue these individuals from that lifestyle. And I'm thankful that we are a part of that, and we've been successful, I believe, now in about 35 prosecutions. And we have some in the pipeline now with the federal courts prosecuting these individuals that have been involved in the sex trade. And these are pimps, these are gang members, these are brutal people, and these are people that need to be removed from our society, if possible, for life. And so we're grateful to be a part of this effort, and I want to thank you guys for everything you do. And Deborah, for Breaking the Chains, I happen to be a board member on Breaking the Chains from the inception, and Deborah has an incredible, passionate heart towards this in rescuing other people from that lifestyle. So we're proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud to see Sergeant Chastain taking the lead for our agency. And thank you, Clint.
All right, Chief, thanks. I will read the proclamation. Whereas Fresno EOC Central Valley Against Human Trafficking Project has assisted and identified over 400 victims of human trafficking in our local communities, with 150 victims from 2016 alone. And whereas Fresno EOC Central Valley Against Human Trafficking Project provides resources to empower self-sufficiency, restore dignity, and recovery from trauma for the victims. And whereas U.S. Department of Labor identified 139 goods from 75 countries made by forced child labor. And whereas the city of Fresno recognizes the need for greater awareness and accountability in regard to modern-day slavery. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand and Fresno City Council members do proclaim Thursday, January 21st, 2017 to be National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Melissa Gomez, that's for you.
[applause]
One of the reforms I'm introducing is we're not doing council member reports and comments. Just kidding. I would be thrown off of here, these people want to speak. As far as council member reports and comments go, the first thing I'd like to do, we do have a couple of two, two new members that I would like to congratulate and welcome. Member Luis Chavez, representing District 5 in the southeast, and Member Gary Bretafeld, who is representing District 6 in the northeast. And we'll go in numerical order. I'm going to call on Member Chavez first. He was unable to attend the swearing-in, so welcome. And your inaugural remarks are, we're looking forward to them.
Thank you, President Olivier. And I will follow the wise words of my colleague, Council Member Capriolio. Brevity is our friend. It should always be our friend. Just, I'll be very brief. I'm very honored to serve the residents of District 5, but I'm more honored to serve alongside each and every one of you. I think we're going to have a great year. I had a chance to be here for the past six years, but it's different because I got a chance to do the work, but I didn't get to vote. Now I get to vote. But, but you know, I really feel that the city of Fresno has a great opportunity to do some great things for our residents. And, you know, we might not always agree on everything, but I have no doubt in my mind that we all want to improve our communities and make our city better. And I think that guiding principle will help the other things sort themselves out. But I'm looking forward to serving with each and every one of you, from District 6 all the way to District 1 with our new mayor, with, you know, as we saw already, the, I wouldn't call it the olive branch, but I'll call it the handshake that Supervisor Magzig came out, and I think we have a great opportunity to leverage those resources that we have at the county level, at the city level, and then also at the school district level with the new cohort over there. So I'm looking forward to that, and you can rest assured I will not be getting the blah-blah award. So thank you, President Olivier.
In terms of the county, handshake is better than hand grenade. So thank you very much, Member Chavez, and welcome aboard. Because I mentioned your name, would you like to, do you have a few remarks to make, Member Bretafeld?
No, I made the remarks last week, was happy to do so, so let's get to work.
Member Capriolio.
Thank you. I just want to extend my congratulations to Councilmember Chavez, as opposed to Chief of Staff Chavez, and look forward to working with you. And congratulations to Gary as well, and look forward to working with you. And especially congratulations to our new mayor, Lee Brand. That's fantastic, really appreciate that. So, and I look forward to working with, continue to work with Members Baines, Olivier, President, as well as Member Soria. Second thing I wanted to say was wishing my Chief of Staff a healthy, happy recovery. She's a little under the weather right now. And the third thing I wanted to ask, since it's council comments, is that could we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Barbara Lee Boran? She passed away December 29th. She was a co-owner of Boran Gun Night for over four decades. She was, she really enjoyed entertaining, and everyone in her family welcomed everyone that they knew. So it was just one happy family, whether you're related or not, and she will be missed. So if we could adjourn in memory of Barbara Lee Boran, I appreciate it. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Member, yes.
I'd just like to note that Councilmember Capriolio does not want to work with Councilmember Brandal. He didn't say you, Councilmember Brandal. And I join with you, Cap, I'm not going to work with Steve either.
Very good.
Member Soria.
I just wanted to quickly join in and congratulating our newest member. I know that we had an opportunity to congratulate Gary last week, but I did want to just publicly congratulate Luis Chavez. Welcome. Looking forward to an exciting year working with not only you, but all my other council colleagues. Thank you.
So nobody else has punched up?
Oh, hey. Right there, bro. Thought you were doing the order thing. Too late. Yeah, right. Council President, thanks for kicking us off to the start of a new year. I want to quote a buddy of mine, an ag leader in our area, Mark Borba. He talks about over the amount of water that will flow underneath the San Francisco Golden Gate Bridge today, just today, is enough to serve over a million Californians for a year. You know, and that affects almost every decision we make, either directly or indirectly. We are struggling aggressively to improve the economy of our region. And it would be very helpful if we could have captured that water that's going to pass under the Golden Gate Bridge today. So I just wanted to make a mention of that. Thank you.
Member Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to highlight the fact that this is the start of the festivities of the Martin Luther King Junior Day weekend activities. And I would invite all my colleagues and all those listening to, make sure that you take a moment to check the websites out there. We have on Saturday the MLK Breakfast, and most notably, the march that will be on Monday. That actually concludes right here at City Hall, so would certainly invite all my colleagues to participate. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are several changes, and you also have a copy of it on the diocese. The changes are Pastor DJ Chyre of St. Ruth's Baptist Church gave the invocation. Under File ID 17-0015, the 1015 item, which is a designation of properties to the Local Register of Historic Resources, has been continued to 12617 at 10:05 a.m. File ID 17-0005, Item 3B, as in Boeing, pertaining to the regulation of news racks in the city of Fresno, has been removed from the agenda by staff. File ID 17-68, Item 4A, which is the following boards and commissions have been removed from the agenda, which is 4A4, Fresno County Transportation Authority, FCTA; 4A6, Fresno County Zoo Authority; 4A9, Joint Powers Financing Authority; and 4A16, Convention Center Oversight Advisory Board. And finally, the following two items have been withdrawn from the agenda under closed session. File ID 1776, Somerset. In have been withdrawn from the agenda under closed session. File ID 1776 Somerset, and File ID 1778 Kennedy Accident at Bulldog Lane was drawn from the agenda. And those are all the changes I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. This time we'll entertain a motion. Does any council member have any changes to the agenda? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah. Do we have a, do we have a motion? Is your motion by Member Capriolio? Okay, we have a motion by Member Soria, second by Member Capriolio. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Moving on now to the consent calendar. Are there any, Member, Member Soria?
I wanted to pull Item 1H. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on any item contained in the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. The screen is clear. We'll vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar passes. Seven to zero. All right. Moving on to the pulled item, Item 1H. Is there someone here? City staff to address Item 1H. Welcome.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. David Cisneros, Public Works Projects Administrator. And this is regarding a project that's being funded by UPRR for some improvements at the Three Crossings Shaw Olive and Ventura. Also, it's a project that is going to be funding a Section 130 improvements, and that's going to be at McKinley and Blackstone. This is a project that has been in the works for a pretty long time. And we have funding from the UPRR, and which is unusual for them to make funds available for any type of improvements. And the second project at McKinley is a federal-funded project. It's a grant, and that's handled through Caltrans Rail Safety. Are there any questions?
Thank you, David. I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted, you know, the work. I know that there's, you guys have been working on this for a while, as you mentioned. And I know that the crossings where we're getting reimbursed through Union Pacific is unique. I had the great fortune of meeting the CEO when he came, and he invited us to a dinner here. I think there was some staff there. And I was excited to hear that there was funds available, so we wouldn't have to expend out of our money. So, I'm glad to see this come through the council. It is going to improve some of the safety concerns that exist within the city. I'm also excited to see the Blackstone and McKinley. It's right on the edge of my district. It's on District 1 and District 7. And that's a crossing where there has been a number, I think there's been a couple of fatalities. And so, we are excited to see that this is moving forward so that we address those issues. I want to thank you guys for the work, and I'm happy to make a motion on this item.
Thank you, Member Soria. We have a motion by Member Soria, and a second by Member Baines. The screen is clear. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you. Okay. We have, we have some time until, we have a scheduled item at 10 o'clock, and we can take care of some general administration between now and then. We'll begin with a workshop from the Fresno Fire Department, the Training Division Resource and SART Report, and how that's being implemented. And that is Fire Chief Kerry Donnis.
Okay. Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Happy New Year. We're kind of doing something maybe a little bit unique. We'd like to come back to you and really essentially give you a briefing on the SART Report, and also on the investment that you made into the department, along with the support of the manager and mayor about a year ago. And kind of bring you up to speed on what we've done with those funds. So, on March 29th, 2015, it was what we believe Fresno Fire Department's most tragic near-miss with Captain Pete Dern, what we refer to as the Cortland Incident. And from that incident, we initiated within eight days a SART Committee, correction, a SART Team, which is really outside set of eyes to come in and investigate this incident. And we gave them a pretty wide breadth to look into other causal factors that contributed to this incident, not just the incident alone. Those folks came in and worked diligently for months on this report. On January 20th, 2016, that SART Team released the findings of the SART Report, which had 169 recommendations for us to drill down into. From that, we came to the city manager and mayor, and we talked about the challenges we had with implementing this report, and what we saw was the gap. And came to the council, and with your blessing, you invested 1.5 million on going into the Training Division, into the oversight of our firefighters by adding three battalion chiefs, four new training officers, one deputy chief in training, one personnel supervisor to, personnel, I'm sorry, protective equipment supervisor to manage the PPE of our firefighters, and an additional 200,000 in training funds. What did we do with that, that investment? This is just a snapshot of what we did with that investment. Over 63,000 hours of training has been completed just in 2016. This is a quick summary, and there's a lot on that slide, which I know is a no-no, but just to give you a quick snapshot of what we've done. Single-company training, multi-company drills, almost 13,000 hours in academy training for new firefighters, training, officer training, lesson plans, and formal training plans have been completed. I want to bring your attention to this algorithm that you have in front of you. Now, this may be kind of odd from, coming from firefighters, but yes, we are professional firefighters, and we do understand risk management principles and algorithms. And we introduced this idea through our Training Chief, Todd Tuggle, who is here, and his team, and really drilled down for our members to walk through the steps and the methodology of how we're going to approach fires, and helped bring our members through this process. This was not just, we showed up one day and presented this. There were classes and classes that we built upon throughout those 63,000 hours I mentioned, that built up to this. And essentially, what we're saying is, if you look at the top, top three bubbles, we're going to risk a lot to save a life, a human life. That's the, kind of the starting point. We're going to risk a little to save property. And we're kind of reframing the mindset of our firefighters. And we're going to risk nothing if there's nothing to be saved. So, there's no point in sending our firefighters in to a building that is fully involved, maybe has a, maybe a red X on it, says it's condemned and/or vacant. There's no life to be saved to save four walls and a roof. That's hard. That's a hard pivot for changing culture in the fire service. But this path, flow path, to walk them through that, then resulted in live-fire training, where we didn't do five companies at a time, we did three companies at a time. And we made every company go through each one of these exercises in a live-fire drill, to have them practice what we have been training on for many, many months. Moving on to the continued investment with this.
Hey, Chief.
Yes?
Hey, over here.
Yeah.
Hey, really quick, I wanted to, first of all, commend you on this. I think this is fantastic. I want to talk a little bit before you move on too quickly with the, when it says, "Risk a little to save property." So, for me, if you could put that in perspective, what does that actually look like as far as a reduced level of risk when it's just going to, you know, when you're only saving property?
So, we're going to risk a little to save property. So, if we see there's an ability to protect a savable structure, I'll give you an example of the most recent fire on Van Ness, near Van Ness, large home. That was essentially fully involved, almost fully involved by the time our folks were in there. We were in there, we saw, we're trying to make a fire attack on the inside. There was a recognition by people on the outside that the ceiling was giving way. We pulled everybody out. That became a defensive attack on that unit, but our goal was to protect the structure next to it. So, we're not going to risk a lot inside that, but we're going to protect those things that we can, whether it be the exposures around that particular building. Let's say it's a room and contents fire. We're going to try and keep that fire to the room and contents, as opposed to letting it take over the entire structure. We don't want to put our firefighters in harm's way if we, if there's not a life to be saved, and it's not, the structural soundness of that building is compromised.
And so, in the past, if, for instance, in a situation like that, we would have reacted the same way when a structure, when we knew no one was in there, when we knew there was not a life to be saved, we would have reacted the same way if someone was in there in the past?
I think there was a tendency to have us to risk a little bit more to go in and find that fire, or put ourselves in harm's way at all costs just to put the fire out.
Got it.
And we're saying, we want, our firefighters are still aggressive. We want them to do it safely. And the ultimate goal is that everyone goes home at the end of the day, and that they have a quality of life at the end of their career.
Sure.
That is the goal. And so, when you manage that under those, that perspective, then it helps give you a little bit better guidance, and this is, that's what this is.
And thanks, Chief. I wanted to, like I said, I wanted to give just further explanation that what that practically is going to look like out in the field. So, thanks for the explanation.
Yep.
Excuse me, Chief, just for the sake of allowing council members to get as much as they can out of your presentation. You're okay with give and take, right, from council members?
Oh, yeah.
That want to pop in with a question. Member Bretafeld, so all of, all of you, feel free to pop in if you have a question for Fire Chief. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief Donnis. It's kind of piggybacking on what Oliver Baines is saying. This is a change, you're saying, in the way you've done things before. Because, you know, your algorithm here makes perfect sense. But before, I guess you, you're saying that you were willing to be a little bit more aggressive, and perhaps firefighters were a little bit more at risk, and you've stepped back and taken a look and say, hey, what are we risking? When is it the best time to risk, as opposed to not risk? That's, that's the change that you're talking about in culture?
That's it. That's it in a nutshell. Yeah.
Okay. That makes perfect sense. And these, I mean, I wouldn't want firefighters going in for buildings that are sitting empty, and there's not value to it. I mean, you all deserve to go home, too. And so, this, this makes perfect sense. I'm glad that this is, this has happened if this wasn't before.
Okay. So, the investment, just continuing on, our emergency, improved emergency management oversight through the additional battalion chiefs. We have added a third battalion chief within the city in August. That, we went from one to eight ratio to one to six. We've improved our response times by 48 seconds for our battalion chiefs to arrive. We also have a second safety officer arriving with an improved 22-second arrival time. So, that, again, that meets our intent of getting staff there in a timely way to mitigate the emergency. Another key topic is changing a culture. This is a process that's going to take many, many years. But I have to tell you, I think we've made a significant leap right away in this first year. And, and I say that not to say that we're done. This is going to be constant pressure relentlessly applied, always, always, forever and ever, if we want to continue this change. And so, we have seen people, used to be a badge of honor almost to have soot all over their coat and their helmet, and walk around with that. And we're trying to educate them, and they've done a really, really good job of washing their equipment, making sure it's clean. Don't keep breathing in those carcinogens day in and day out when you have, you know, an extractor or a washing machine that we can take care of that, that with. We've seen an attitude of change in, our members are buttoning up. They're closing up all of their, their gear. They're putting their hoods on. They're taking a little bit more time, which is what we have asked them to do, to make sure that, you know, they're buttoned up, and they're ready to go, and their seat belts are on. And if it takes us 10 seconds more to get there, then so be it. If it takes us 15 seconds more to get there, then so be it. But that's what we're seeing, which is what we wanted. And so, we're going to keep relentless pressure on that. We've also seen a re-energized attitude in training. We're doing a lot of hands-on training, new fresh training for our members, which I think is a, re-energizes them. I think also the benefit of adding new firefighters brings in new people into the fold, and requires everyone else to brush up on the old policies and start retraining as well. Our PPE storekeeper, this is one area that we really needed the investment in. It was being stored out at a north-central old fire station off-site. We've brought it in-house into Fire Headquarters for now. We hope to have it in our supply area when we relocate a fire shop and public safety building for our fleet. But we're having our members, it's, it's, all of it's been washed, it's repaired, it's inspected. We have a 10-year service life. We know exactly where all those pieces of equipment are. They're being managed by the supervisor, and we couldn't have been more pleased with that investment and oversight. So, the SART Report, within six months of the SART Report, this is what we've accomplished so far. We've implemented the SART Committee, implemented the SART Committee, which is being chaired by Brad Driscoll. He is a fire captain and also was sitting on the SART Team, and is, happens to be part of the Executive Board of Local 753. He is the chair of this committee. They have implemented, of the 163 recommendations, have been categorized into 21 objectives. They've been prioritized. 30 of those recommendations have been completed. 83 of those recommendations are currently in process, and 54 are prioritized and placed in the queue for completion. The training staff is in a process of developing an Officer Academy, a Fire Captain Academy. We have not had one in probably 10 to 12 years. This is another recommendation out of the SART Committee and Report. Leadership training has occurred and will continue to occur, and our goal is to have a leadership and/or Chief Officer Academy on the go-forward. But those classes have happened, and we are continuing with that. The Command and Control Subcommittee has been assembled. Policy updates and integration, training standardization, and three new training props have been custom-built by our own firefighters down in our current training facility for our hands-on training. Getting close here to wrapping up, there are two recruit academies that were accomplished. One is graduating tomorrow. You, again, I hope you all can attend. 9 o'clock here. That's almost 32 new firefighters in a year that we have brought into the fold, and we are now assimilating into our department. Fire Department Local Academy accreditation. Our Fire Academy at Fresno City has become accredited from the State Fire Marshal. This is a big step. What that means is, we can bring people in, and we're looking at, in the next hiring, as one avenue, is to bring people in and try and as one avenue, is to bring people in and try and cast a wider net to allow people to at least have an EMT, and then we will train you to be a firefighter. And try and, and reach to try and hire a little bit more local if possible with that approach. We have plans to refurbish and develop a professional training facility and we are actively trying to partner with Fresno City College on making that happen. The very, the roof props we talked about, and we also have modular live-fire training props, we take essentially C-trains and we have converted those into a training prop. Fresno's vision is to be the standard of excellence in the fire service. This SART report, no one wanted this to happen, but we tried to make something really good out of a really bad thing. We have been, in no less than four times, been identified into articles in fire service major journals and magazines. We are presenting at Firehouse World, we did last year and we will next month, on the SART report and its implementation. We have other agencies around the country are looking at us, saying, "How did you do this? What did you do?" And really, this is the playbook, as we said, and I say this humbly, this was a playbook for any fire department, any firefighter, any chief officer, any fire chief. And quite frankly, it could be a city manager or other that says, "Take this playbook and see if we're doing any of these things, and if we are, here's the playbook to stop or to improve it." And we're being looked at as that industry standard in leading in that way. And it was, it was really, quite frankly, a very easy decision to make to implement this SART team, to come in here, because it was the right thing to do. And it was courageous, I guess, and I say humbly, to do that because we exposed ourselves to criticism. And, but it was the right thing to do and we're going to be better for it. In closing, the Cortland incident has changed this department forever, and I expect it will continue to make great improvements in this department through this avenue. We will be the model for the fire service in this area, and we are committed to implementing the recommendations of this report. That's my presentation, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
And Chief, I don't have any more questions, I just wanted to really make a brief comment and you answered the one question I had. I could not remember if the SART team was a voluntary exercise that you chose to have your agency go through. And with that, thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to commend you and the department. I remember when the Cortland incident happened, very, you know, I have very strong memories about that, about that time in this building. I remember your leadership and I remember the leadership of, quite frankly, your, the union and your staff that worked with you. It was really a tremendous time in the, in the agency, but very difficult. You all went through some very tough realizations, I remember listening to that and to see that you all subjected yourself to this level of scrutiny, accepted the feedback, that wasn't all positive, incorporated the feedback into what we see here before today in a long-term attempt to change the culture of the agency and the organization is to be commended. And I commend you for your leadership and please take back my personal commendation to your firefighters, which, who I think are some of the finest men and women in the country for sure. And we appreciate them, we appreciate the work that they do, and we certainly appreciate what you all are doing right now to be on the cutting edge of how fire service should be implemented around the country. You know, I am certainly hopeful that other, you know, departments in, in the city are taking note of what it takes to change a culture and to be honest. So, thank you, Chief, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Member Bretafeld.
And once again, I want to echo what Councilmember Baines is saying. I mean, you have taken a tragedy and turned it into something that will be helpful for your department and I think many, many other departments. As I look at this work and what you did, it's phenomenal. And I think it makes your department much more effective in terms of helping all of us be safer, but also your, your own firefighters. And as I said before, I mean, you all have a right to be safe as well and to go home to your families. And so, I think you've turned what is clearly a tremendous tragedy into something that is a model for not only this department, but throughout the country. As I see, you know, you're already being cited in journals and, so I think the tragedy has, has become something positive and I want to commend you for doing that. I know it's not easy to turn around a culture in a fire department, especially, you know, law enforcement or fire departments. You guys are very, very tough and you have that image and you, that's because you are. And so, to turn it around, reassess things is not an easy thing to do, and so I commend you tremendously, you and your department.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I think, thanks for doing the right thing and self-evaluating, opening yourself up to criticism. I mean, that's probably the only path forward. Let me ask you a question. So, since the tragedy, have we, have you seen, have you had to increase the number of, and I don't know if you use the term "write-up." Say, for instance, you have a firefighter that's just kind of, wants to do his or her own thing, not pay attention, not listen to these new rules. Have you had any increase in write-ups in the department?
You know, we haven't, but we're handling it right there on the fire ground. So, if we see a firefighter or its crew heading up to manage a task they've been assigned and they are not fully prepared with all their PPE on, they're pulled back right then and they're going to, you know, get themselves together before they're given another assignment. It only takes one or two of those, quite frankly, in the fire service, to that word get around within like an hour. And people start, they don't want to be that guy or that girl or that team that doesn't get the assignment because they're not buttoned up and ready to go to work. So, it's, it doesn't take too many of those for that to be corrected. And as I said, even the feedback, it's not from our perspective, it's from the feedback from the members, they are telling us we're taking more time. We're taking a little bit more time, we're not, the engineer isn't rolling a wheel until everyone's buckled. That's part of our interview process when we're looking to promote folks, what are you going to do if, if you're the engineer, you're the captain? So, they understand this is the expectation and we keep, as I said before, relentless pressure on, that's the expectation, it's not wavering. And so, that will soon become, that's the norm. And so, I wouldn't say that, no, we're not, I'm not seeing a bunch of more write-ups. I think everybody wanted to pivot, they just needed the nudge.
And so, if a firefighter, an individual firefighter shows up, there's a blaze going, jumps out of the truck, does not put on their gloves, what's the chain of responsibility there? First, that firefighter should be responsible, but they're not, so who's ultimately responsible at that scene?
The company officer is in charge of that firefighter. Then it would go to the battalion chief or the incident commander that shows up. And so, if that became an issue, then yes, of course, we would have people, we call them "write memos" and then it would go through a review process.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Member Soraya.
Thank you, Council President. Just, we'll keep my remarks very brief. Thank you, Chief, for the report, and I want to just echo some of the same words that were shared by my colleagues about the report not just being an exercise, which I think we do a lot, right? We do these reports. So, I'm glad that you're sharing what you guys are implementing and the shift. I know that change isn't easy, so I'm glad to hear that there's been progress and that also that the firefighters have recognized the need to change the culture. And, you know, it won't change overnight, but I'm glad to see that there has been positive steps. So, I do want to thank you for your leadership and for sticking with it to really improve our fire department and the safety not only of our firefighters, but also of our entire community, because I think it's, it's a ripple effect. So, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, President. Chief, thank you for that presentation and thank you for the work that you do. And a special thank you to our folks over at Station Number Eight on Cedar and Butler, they do great work in our, in our community. Appreciate the flow chart that you put together. I want to just ask a quick question on the establishing ICP and developing an IAP on the sub-box of resources in the organizational chart. What are our current staffing ratios that we currently have right now?
Okay, help me, I've lost where you're looking at on here. Okay? You want to know what our ratios are?
Yeah, staffing ratios for firefighters citywide.
Oh, we're, well, currently, we have, well, effective on Monday, we will have 77 firefighters on duty each day. That's a, an increase from our low, right before the downturn, right around 63. That'll put us, I want to say, I want to say .60 per thousand. But, you know, we're making progress, of course, you're going to see that, and we're going to ask for more firefighters, we need to continue to increase our firefighting force.
And that's what I was, that's what I was getting at. So, I mean, because we could have a really great model, but if we don't have the manpower, the capacity, I think it definitely affects how you go about allocating your resources or even calculating some of the risks that you've had. So, where are we at compared to other big cities with those, with those ratios?
This, this isn't any new news. This, this fire department is, it's one of the most challenging staffed departments in any metro department in the country. But I also say that, knowing that we have challenges throughout this entire city, in every department, in need. So, it's not just police and fire, there are many other departments that need an investment. But this metro fire department, you won't find another metro fire department in the country that has as few firefighters on each day as Fresno does.
No, and I appreciate that, and I think that'll be a conversation for our council to have, obviously, during, during the budget. I really want to also say in public, thank you for the report that you put together on the different fires and where they're occurring. I think that's helpful. Often times, we get calls on what's going on, and I think it was last year or previous that we had a series of fires, I think we had, you know, an arsonist or a group of individuals that were really just living in some of those abandoned homes and then starting fires. We had one on Huntington Boulevard and you see the blight that that, that happens, but I was really happy to see our firefighters respond pretty quickly to that. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that and appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
President Libya. Thank you, Chief. That, nobody else is punched up.
I just want to close by saying, this is a team effort. I can't do this alone. I really have high value and respect for my team and for our firefighters that serve this city. Implementing this SART report is a team effort and it includes all of you, the city manager, assistant city manager and mayor, to allow us to continue this, this progress. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief, and to your team. We have about 25 minutes before our first timed item, we'll continue with general administration. Let's do item 3C from the Public Works Department. This is the 31st Amendment to the Annual Appropriations Resolution to appropriate $500,000 for the installation of a permanent calcium hydroxide chemical feed system at the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Facility.
Thank you, Council President, City Council. This item is a request to appropriate $500,000 to install a permanent calcium hydroxide feed system at the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. For our, all of our treatment plants, our wastewater plant and our water plants, three most highest line items that you'll see are labor, power, chemicals. So, we're always looking, since that's such a large line item, we're always looking at trying to optimize our chemicals, changing purchases, vendors. In this instance, last year, we took a look at changing the chemical at the, the chemical we use to adjust the pH to calcium hydroxide. We had learned that the city had previously attempted a trial back in the 2007, 2008 timeframe and didn't work out so well. So, this year, we said, "We want to take another look and we want to try and do some mitigation measures to address that issue they ran into," and we got it to work. And so, now that we got the calcium hydroxide to work, we'd like to go ahead and move the calcium hydroxide. It's less expensive and it's also gives us the benefit of the calcium is some benefit, the hydroxide is what we're really after. Right now, we use sodium hydroxide, the sodium hydroxide is, the sodium piece, there's not a lot of value in the sodium, it just kind of passes through the system. So, we're going to get a two-for on both sides of this chemical chain. So, with that, we'd like to go ahead and ask council to approve $500,000 for us to put a permanent calcium hydroxide feed system. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. We have a number of council members punched up, Member Chavez, Member Bretafeld, and Member Soraya, in that order.
Thank you, President. Tommy, a couple of quick questions. So, I understand that this has been the chemicals that we're adding to, I don't even want to call it "smooth the water," but make it more tolerable for the pipes, is that, is that what this is?
Correct. There's a lot of things, for all water systems, you've got to make sure that pH is coming in at the right side. So, calcium, so the hydroxide piece is the one that helps us adjust the alkalinity, the pH, the calcium helps us with the alkalinity, the calcium helps us with the hardness. Sodium doesn't give us any of those benefits, so we wanted to get something in there that we could get a benefit, and sodium didn't give us that, so the calcium is what we wanted to switch to. And again, the city knew that seven, eight, nine years ago, they just couldn't make it work, and last year, we pilot-tested it differently and we got it to work.
And I've been following this pretty closely, obviously, with the Southeast Water Treatment Plant that's going to be coming online, so I'm very interested in, in what type of steps we're taking to obviously prevent that when we do go live over at the Southeast Water Treatment Plant. So, we're obviously taking steps to ensure that learning process occurs to in some of the pipes in Southeast, correct?
Perfect. So, this, the pilot testing we did last year proved successful, so we made the change of the Southeast Plant. So, the Southeast Plant is going to be equipped with calcium hydroxide as well.
Okay, great. Those are my questions. President?
For Bretafeld.
Hey, Tommy. So, this didn't work out, you said so well in 2007. So, how's it working out better now, since it's the same chemicals in the water?
It's same chemical, so one of the things that we had done before was we were dosing it by itself at the end of the treatment process, and the calcium was not reacting as it should have been, and so it was just depositing out in the clear well. And so, we had, you know, inches and feet of calcium just sitting in the clear well, and so we had to go in there and clean it out. So, what we needed to do was find a way to get the calcium to stay in solution and not precipitate out. And so, what we did, this pilot test is, we hit it with calcium hydroxide and then we hit it with carbon dioxide as well, and when you hit the calcium hydroxide with the carbon dioxide, it stays in solution and carries out into the system, and we get the benefit of the calcium in the system and we get the benefit of the pH control. So, it was the dosing of the, we changed the point where we added the carbon dioxide, and we made that change at the Southeast Plant, too. We got now two dosing points for carbon dioxide at the Southeast Plant.
So, is this information that was given to us by our consultants in Virginia, I mean, were they the ones who said, "Yeah, this is the way to go," and we didn't have that information?
Right. Prior to that, we had retained a different expert to kind of help us on water treatment chemistry, and so, one of the changes that he had suggested was the calcium hydroxide. Again, we get the benefit of the calcium because the sodium wasn't helping us, and the staff said, "Oh, we tried that and it didn't work." And he says, "Well, let's go ahead and look at it again," and then once we changed that carbon dioxide dosing point as well, so we put them right there together. We did it in a jar first for the staff because they wanted to say, "Watch, it's going to precipitate out." And he says, "Yep." It precipitated out. Then we did it in the jar, put the calcium hydroxide, put the carbon dioxide, and it went into solution. Everybody like, "Oh, that's what we need to do." So, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Tommy, for that information. The only other question that I had was in terms of the funds, maybe if you can talk about what funds are being used?
Right. So, this is why we're, so we didn't appropriate it earlier, so now we're going to appropriate it in the middle of the year. And so, earlier, we had some water sales that we had made to the Kern-Tillery Water District, that was about $2.5 million. It's a net of about $200, $2 million because we put $500,000 back to the ratepayers because they had originally purchased the water. So, this is the money will be So this is the money will be used from, from that sale back in, I think it was Ju, July or August we made.
And this is just a one-time?
This is one-time, just to get the system up and running.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no more council members punched up, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion by Member Bretafeld and a second by Member Soria. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you. I think we, I think we need you back for the next one, too. For Item 3D, DPU actions pertaining to the engineering services to divert renewable natural, natural gas into the natural gas pipeline at the Fresno-Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility.
Morning, council members. This is Council President. I'm Kevin Norgard of the Department of Public Utilities Wastewater Management Division. The item before you is, wastewater is seeking to approve two items today. The first is the approval of an AAR for six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The second is the award of a consultant agreement for a feasibility study, and then the design of a diversion pipeline to inject renewable natural gas into the natural gas pipeline. Currently, the wastewater plant produces between five hundred and a thousand cubic feet a minute of natural gas, or digested gas, twenty-four hours a day. This gas is typically conditioned and then either used as fuel in our gas turbine or in a boiler to heat our thirteen digesters. There are instances where we have too much gas and where either the turbine's down or the boiler is not available, and we have to flare that gas. This diversion pipeline would give us a third redundant system for that gas. This gas is a, is a renewable, considered a renewable energy, and it is highly valuable. It sells about three times the price of natural gas on the market. In late, in two thousand sixteen, we awarded two contracts. One of them was to increase the gas production through looking at our digesters and how we feed them and what we feed them with. And the second one was to look at our turbine or power generation facility and make it more efficient, so we would use less gas to produce more power. So with this third contract, it'll give us a fully optimized digested gas management system. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. There is no one punched up. This item is in District Three. Member Baines?
Yeah, I'm happy to support, just, just a couple, because I totally get what you're trying to do, and I think that, I remember parts of, some of this conversation started last year with the turbine. I remember we had a, an interesting discussion a little while ago. Just really curious about the engineer, about the firm we're contracting with. Is this really highly specialized engineering work to? Okay.
Yeah, these are, these people, that they do gas conditioning and major gas pipeline stuff for landfill gas and natural gas.
Yeah, it seemed like it. I just wanted to make sure we had on the record that, because we don't have anybody from Fresno doing it, so.
Right. If you look at the council report, we actually, we're going to do one contract. Well, we did one RFQ for the entire gas optimization thing.
Yeah.
But when we interviewed the consultants, we actually found three specific skill sets that we decided to break it up into those skill sets and award three separate contracts.
Got it. Happy to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Member Baines, a second from Member Bretafeld. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, seven to zero. Six to zero with Member Soria absent. Okay, we have about ten minutes. Let's, I'm going to go out of order, and we, we have a timed item at ten. Let's do Item 3F, approve a write-off on a two thousand seven homebuyer assistance loan for a property at forty-nineteen East Garland Avenue. This is Darm.
Hello, Council. Kelly Furtado with the Development and Resource Management Department. Today, I'm in front of you on behalf of the Housing and Community Development Division, and joining me shortly, they're probably running down here right now, are our new housing manager, Tom Morgan, and Karina Nunez, who handles our home projects. And this is an item that is related to the home project, so I'll make sure to point them both out to you if you have any questions. Basically, in two thousand and seven, this is all included in your staff reporting, there was a program that is no longer in existence, but there was a program. We did a homebuyer assistance loan to a gentleman, Mr. Perez. Mr. Perez is now experiencing some hardships, and he has been working with his bank to enter into a short sale. So the short sale has been approved, and everybody is waiting on the city council to make a decision on whether or not we will accept six thousand dollars for our position as a second mortgage holder. There is an outstanding balance of seventy, about seventy-five thousand dollars on this property, and the reason that we're before council is because anything written off over fifty thousand dollars has got to be approved by a council member. We're joined behind me, okay? The six thousand dollars is what the bank is offering the city get reimbursed, and that basically goes back to HUD. So HUD has, this process is an approved process, but any recovery that we get in a situation where we're writing off funds, the recovered money has to go back to HUD. So it is a HUD-approved process, we just need approval. Wanted to make sure that you're aware that if we choose not to approve this item, that Chase, the bank, can still move forward with the short sale. However, we just don't get the six thousand dollars that's been valued to us as the second mortgage, and then the city is in a position to work with Mr. Perez, the homeowner, directly to recover costs. And we do have an agreement, and we can do that. However, given the hardships that he is encountering, as well as the intention of this program, you know, it was for low-income folks to help them get into homes, and that there is a buyer in the wings, and this, this housing will be fine if we, if we don't do that. Staff is recommending approval of this item, and I just wanted to add that this is a home in District Four, if that helps the discussion at all. It is in your, your district. So staff is recommending approval of this item, which would be writing off the amount.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the city council? Is Mr. Perez in attendance this morning to?
He is not in attendance, but he has provided in the staffing packet a letter expressing explanation of his personal circumstances, so that's all been included in the staff report.
Okay. I have a couple of council members punched up. Member Brandow, followed by Member Bretafeld. Yeah, I did.
Kelly, are you familiar with the hardships inside the packet that you just referenced?
I am not as familiar. I know that Karina, who's, who's already made her way down here, so this is Karina and Mr. Morgan, Tom Morgan, the new employee. If you'd like to have Karina come up and answer some questions, certainly.
Yeah, I don't care. I haven't read it.
Morning.
Hi, Karina. What, what are the hardships that are referenced in the binder?
Mr. Perez was trying to help his brother out, who is incarcerated, and who was taking care of his elderly, disabled parents. So now that his brother is incarcerated, Mr. Perez needs to help out his parents, which means helping them with the mortgage, et cetera, and he cannot afford two mortgages at this time.
Got it, got it. All right, thank you. Thanks, Karina.
Member Bretafeld?
No, hey, I'm still, now I just have to shift back to Kelly just for a second. Thank you. Kelly, how often do we get involved in these loans?
So we no longer have this loan program, so this is something that started back in two thousand and seven. There have been, and, and again, Karina's actually the one that would actually know the details on this, but I would say that there have been probably, were you saying, Karina, about a hundred foreclosures since two thousand and seven on these, these loans? So again, we don't do it currently through the HUD program. We have a Cal Home program that we do, and that's about to end as well. So the city is not, you know, looking forward in timeline, we're not going to be involved, doing new ones.
Is there, is there another, is this, so was it a, so was it a federal program?
Yes, HUD program. A HUD program, and we would get the program income.
Federal money went in HUD. Okay, through HUD. Okay.
Most of our other programs, too, council member, have been turned into grants instead of loans.
Turned into grants instead of loans?
Because the population that is being served is incredibly low-income.
And experienced hardships related, okay. So, Kelly, are there any other HUD programs that are, that are kind of moving forward through the pipeline to replace this program, where there's loans, where there's a loan?
There are not HUD programs. We currently are about to close out what we call a Cal Home program, and that is a state program, where we've been doing the same thing, up to fifty thousand dollars, similar thing for first-time homebuyers. But we're, we've expended those funds and are about to close that one out as well. There is nothing currently on the books for that. We are, however, we just, this week, started our first community workshop, because we're already starting our annual action planning process for the next year. So there are options, but there is nothing currently in the works.
Okay. All right. I'd like to take a meeting with you about the new programs that HUD will be using, so.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you, Council President.
Hi, Kelly. So the initial loan that the city loaned through HUD, it wasn't obviously general fund, it was HUD money. What was that amount?
Karina, it was, it was around seventy-two thousand dollars.
Okay. So that was seventy-two thousand to Mr. Perez to buy this property, correct?
Correct.
And now, the city with HUD would get six thousand back on that seventy-two loan, correct?
We would get it back, and we would provide it to HUD.
To HUD. So that's quite a loss to the taxpayers through a federal loan. And to add insult to injury, Mr. Perez would get three thousand dollars through Chase Bank, and the Chase Bank has said, the city isn't, if the city challenges that or the six thousand, they're moving forward anyway. Correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Now, the property, it says, it's, the current value is estimated a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So why is there not an effort to, to get somebody to buy it at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and pay off the loan?
So I'm not as familiar with the short sale process. Karina, do you have, do you have additional? It, it's basically, as I understand it, it's the short sale process is a little bit different. I'll let, I'll let her talk through the specifics.
Chase has accepted the, it was about, I think it was ninety-one or ninety-three thousand, they accepted that amount because they had a buyer. So the way the short sale works is they just give a portion of the second mortgage, which is about five point five percent, which is the six thousand dollars that they have offered the city. We have tried to negotiate a larger amount of money, of course, and they won't negotiate. It's either you accept the six thousand dollars, you release the covenants, or you, they will allow the house to go into foreclosure, and, and we get nothing.
So usually, the short sale, though, is when they're upside down on it. You know, the, the house isn't worth what is owed on it. Now, if I'm missing something, it says that you?
Bruce, you can.
I think that's the, the council member's question, is that you had a first, and then there was a loan that we provided through HUD. Between those two, I think technically, the house is upside down. The challenge with these homes is that if you looked at them in a traditional loan, there was not enough equity or enough value in the home to put seventy thousand dollars into it. So if you take the value of the first mortgage, and Karina, I'm in the freeway, so you're going to help me, but my understanding is that, is that there could be a ninety thousand dollar first, sitting on that property, and then the loan. It's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but the house is only worth ninety to a hundred, right?
Okay, I, that, now it's upside down. It wasn't clear to me in, in this report. It sounded like there was a seventy thousand dollar loan, and you just sell it for a hundred and thirty, and it's paid off.
No equity, no equity.
Gotcha. Okay. I mean, this certainly raises issues of why we would, why any taxpayer money would be used in this kind of way. Certainly raises questions for me, and there really is a rub to this, that the person who's walking away from this is getting three thousand dollars when he didn't meet his obligation. Most of us who have home mortgages wouldn't be rewarded by the bank when we walk away. We would lose our house, and that would be it. But anyway, I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's the process, the, the three thousand dollars. We did try to get the three thousand dollars, but Chase won't allow it.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions in terms, so you, you mentioned that the program is no longer, we're not doing this program?
Correct. It's a program that's not been in, offered for some time. It started back in two thousand and seven.
And so, in regards to this, the specific old program, when the loan was given, if the homeowner stayed in the home for a certain amount of period, was it then forgiven?
Yeah, I think it was fifteen years, and, and if I understand correctly, though, it was only four thousand of it would have been forgiven. Is that correct? Yes. So it wasn't the full amount. And again, a lot of our newer programs, we've crafted them toward these are grants because of a lot of these issues that we're encountering.
Yeah. Okay. And I know that, obviously, there's some concern in terms of trying to, I guess, forgive or write off the, the loan. I think that, I will say that in terms of these types of programs, I think that they're very valuable, especially in a city like ours. So I know moving forward, it, this program doesn't exist, but we did have a conversation during budget last year where we allocated a million dollars for affordable housing purposes, and one of the, the, the things that we said, we talked about not only doing rehab, but also doing a homebuyer assistance, some kind of program. And I know that we still need to, yeah, we need to still kind of talk about what would that look like. But I think that we should not let this, you know, tank that, because I think that we still have an opportunity to provide folks in our community an opportunity to own a home. We know really how valuable it is to, to be a homeowner. Obviously, I think there needs to be some checks and make sure that when we are working with people and giving them the opportunity, that we minimize our risks. And so, yeah, I just wanted to make those comments, because I know we've, we've had these, the conversation before, and I'm still supportive of a homebuyer assistance program. I know that unfortunately, this, this is a, not a great situation, but I think moving forward, we need to look at a solution that could still continue to help our community with a potentially new, new program. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, it sounds like to me, bottom line, this is the best we can do from a unfortunate situation. So at least we get the write-off value from this situation. So with that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. The screen is clear. I, I just wanted to clarify one more time. A yes vote does what? A no vote does what?
A yes vote writes off the balance owed, and Mr. Perez will be able to enter into the short sale agreement that his bank has proposed, and he will get out of this mortgage.
And a no vote?
A no vote would mean that the city does not approve the write-off balance, and the no vote would result in us then having to determine whether or not we were going to go after Mr. Perez directly.
You mentioned in your presentation, you said there's one hundred, there have been one hundred foreclosures from this program?
I believe so.
In, in our area alone?
In our, in the program. Of the, of the awards that were made for this program, for first, for loan assistance for first-time homebuyers, I understand that at least a hundred of them
It's, it's, it's not.
Have gone through foreclosure. I'm sorry, for, yeah, not short sale, but through foreclosure, and I think about seven of them have gone through a short sale process, only I don't think it raised to the level that required counsel.
Thank you. Member Bretafeld?
One quick question. So it's been a hundred foreclosures, and now we have stopped giving loans, now we're just granting the money?
We no longer, this program was exhausted and closed out. So everybody that had a loan, they're simply paying in, it's what we call program income, it's basically revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And the other program was a completely different program, Cal Home State, completely different requirements, and it also was a loan at one point. We could not get enough loans out because of the requirements. It was changed two years ago, Bruce, into a granting process.
Granting process, meaning they're just giving the money, they don't have to pay it back?
Correct. The requirements that came with the funding allowed for that. The city changed our own internal policies to allow for that, and it has been very successful, and we've expended the funds.
It's been successful in what?
We've expended the funds. So again, we're about to close that one out.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, the screen is clear. We'll vote. We've heard what a yes does, a yes vote does and no vote. We have a motion, a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Let's vote electronically.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wait. I made a mistake. Can we press the reset button? Okay. Motion fails, four to three, with Members Soria, Baines, and Capriolio voting yes. Thank you, counsel. We'll now move to our ten o'clock item. This is a timed item.
No, HUD lost six thousand.
This is a ten o'clock item, a hearing regarding the vacation of a portion of an alley between North Blackstone Avenue and North Effie Street, north of East Cornell. And this is in District Seven.
Good morning, Council President, council members, staff. My name's Jason Cammett. I am the Chief Surveyor, City of Fresno Public Works Department. I am here today to ask council to open a hearing regarding the vacation of a portion of an alley between North Blackstone Avenue and North Effie Street, just north of Cornell Avenue. This hearing was set by Resolution of Intent 1109-D, which was approved by consent on December eighth, two thousand and sixteen. It has been properly noticed and published in accordance with the Streets and Highways Code. This vacation is being requested by Jimmy Pelicarpo. He is requesting the vacation to satisfy conditions of approval for CUP 16-015, which is the proposed development of a Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant. The vacation will, essentially, will be vacating a portion of an alley and realigning it to accommodate that development. The vacated portion of the alley will be reserving a public utility easement to accommodate the existing utilities in that area. Staff recommends approval of this request. I ask council to open that hearing right now, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. And because it's in District Seven, I have a few remarks about it. This, Long John Silver's is, it's, it's a troubled site, the way it exists right now. This is where, if you remember, a couple of years ago, there was a murder. Casey Hagard was, was murdered in front of this property. And that was caught on videotape, and especially grisly crime. But the reason why people are interested in this, there's a, there's a McDonald's almost across the street. It's the busiest street between Bakersfield and Sacramento. So, there's a car count there that people want, that the people are interested in. I live walking distance from this location, and I can promise you, my family will patronize this Popeyes chicken. So, this is a fantastic project, and there's no reason, I mean, staff's recommending that we vacate this, this portion, and there's no reason why we shouldn't to get these folks going, to revitalize this, this location and also put folks to work. So, I'm absolutely happy to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a, a motion, a second by Member Brett Felt. And with that, the screen is clear. Do council members have comments on this item? Okay. Then let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero with Members Soria absent. Move now to our ten oh five item. This is a hearing to consider rezone application, variance, development permit application, variance application. Staff, hey, Bruce.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Bruce Barnes, Development Department. You have before you today a project that pertains to a proposed eighty-unit gated complex. The project involves pre-zoning the property from rural residential in the county to multifamily residential in the city. It also includes a development permit, which would allow the phased development of an eighty-unit apartment complex. A variance would also be needed, since it would need, be needed to allow for a reduction of the front coverage due to the narrow street frontage of this particular lot. And it also would authorize staff to initiate the annexation of this territory. So, staff does recommend adopting a finding of conformity, adopting the rezone ordinance, approving the development permit, approving the variance, and authorizing staff to initiate the annexation. And I would point out that on page seven, there was a sentence that should have been deleted at the bottom of the page that read, "Access will be relinquished along all major streets." That's not accurate, so we want to point that out for the record, that that was an error. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Give us your name, address for the record.
Good morning, President Olivier, members of the City Council. My name is Joe Guagliardo, 5414 East Pitt, Fresno, California, representing the applicant in this, in this matter. Staff has summed up the situation quite well. We are in support of staff's recommendation. I would like to point out just a, a couple of things to, to the council. This project will be paying about two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars in school fees to the Central Unified School District. It'll also be responsible for paying approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars in street improvement intersection fees to the City of Fresno to help alleviate, you know, traffic through various areas of the city. In addition to that, the project will also be paying about ninety-six thousand dollars to COG for additional transportation improvements. Two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars in park fees, under the old structure, I'm not sure what it's going to be with the new one. Forty thousand dollars in police fees, thirty-five thousand dollars in, in fire fees. We took, we had a neighborhood meeting prior to the Planning Commission. We've tried to incorporate the site design, so we have minimal impact upon existing residential development. We will be doing street improvements along our frontage, as well as paying these fees that I've identified. Annexation of this property will help the city start eliminating more and more of those county islands. We would accept staff's recommendation and conditions. We appreciate your time. And if necessary, I would like the opportunity for rebuttal in case anybody brings up any issues. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. Member Baines?
Thank you, Council President. First off, Joe, thanks for coming down today. I've been kind of tracking this project for maybe seven, seven or eight months now, somewhere in that timeframe. And remember when you all brought it in as a, conceptually, and as you moved it forward? So, happy to see this project going forward. Want to certainly acknowledge some of the traffic issues that are, are around there. And I know that our office, along with my colleague from District One, will be working together to really alleviate some of that in, in the future. So, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the, the item today.
And I will second. We have a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. We'll move on to our ten-ten agenda item. It's a hearing to consider rezone application. And I have a yellow card for this one. City staff.
Yes. Again, good morning. Bruce Barnes, Development Department. This project does pertain to the city's southeast surface water treatment plant, which is currently under construction. And it is, by the way, about thirty percent complete. The project involves pre-zoning the project from the AE twenty district in the county to the public and institutional zone in the city of Fresno and annexing it to the city. This is a, this parcel has to meet three criteria in order for it to be annexed under state law. State law says any non-contiguous annexations are permitted as long as the site is, number one, less than three hundred acres, owned by the city, and used for a municipal purpose. So, staff does recommend to the council that you adopt an addendum to environmental assessment C fourteen oh four one, adopt the rezone ordinance, and adopt the resolution authorizing staff to proceed with the annexation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I have a yellow card on this item. Mr. Kurt Blank. Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Kurt Blank.
Three minutes.
Kurt Blank, six-six-three-five East Floridora Avenue. I have the very first house, closest house, to the east of the project. Some of the neighbors had received two notices regarding this project, letting them know. I did not. Otherwise, I would have come to the original hearings. We also received, we did receive notices saying that there was traffic and noise issues. Those we received after the project had already started. Those of us that live on Floridora Avenue moved there so we could have a quiet place outside of the city, but with access. That, we feel, has been destroyed. Our property values have gone down. We have people trying to sell, and they're having problems selling. Those that I've spoken to feel it's totally wrong for something that's zoned agricultural to suddenly become industrial or commercial, or however we want to term it. I would think that I can't build a ten-story, a, a complex or something if it's not zoned for that. I don't know how, without us being notified to give input, how the county could have rezoned it from agricultural to whatever would be appropriate for a big project like this, commercial, industrial, whatever that would be called. So, the zoning is a, a problem that I have in general with that, because it's affected those of us that live there. Not just with the noise and the trucks racing through in the mud and so forth, but also our property values and our peace and so forth and quiet. The other issue that I have is annexation. My fear is that the city wants to continue to expand. First, it's going to be this, and then eventually, it's going to be to Temperance and further to the east. Those of us, all of us neighbors on Floridora Avenue that I've spoken to, not one wants to become part of the city. My question is, are we going to be next to be swallowed up by the city? And so, for those reasons, I mean, if you lived where we lived, and each person has two and a half, four, eight acres and so forth, and you're there to have a little quiet place in the quote "country," then near the city, and this happens literally just to the west of me, I mean, I can see it every day. And I don't receive the two notices that other people get so that I can even give my input. I think that's wrong. The only thing that I, what am I trying to say? And I'm not used to these meetings, forgive me. I should have received those notices so I could have made a complaint or at least given input in the first place. We just feel that our properties have been ruined, and we face either putting up with it, and the reduced property values, and our taxes haven't gone down to, to, to help with that. And I just don't understand how it could have been changed, the zoning, without us knowing. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Blank. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the City Council on this item? Please give us your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Good morning, President Olivier. My name is Mike Di Benedetto. My address is one-three-two-four-four East Bullard Avenue in Clovis. Well, it's actually in the county. In any event, we own, I represent Di Benedetto Properties. We own the parcel directly north of and across the street from the sewer, the water treatment plant that's being constructed presently. Our issue is, is that this annexation is something that we had attempted to do some time ago, approximately ten years ago, and had worked with the City of Fresno, the County of Fresno, in regards to doing this. And our, the, the roadblock, if you will, to that was Gallo. Gallo's not interested in coming into the City of Fresno. And we would like our property to be annexed into the City of Fresno so that we can develop it in accordance to the general plan that you have outlined for that area. And in any event, we would like consideration for including our parcel, approximately twenty-five acres, directly north of that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. This is in, it's in your general vicinity, right, Member Capriolio? Is this out? Okay. We, we have a motion to approve. We have a second by Member Baines. A couple of council members punched up. Member Brett Felt.
Staff available to answer. The first gentleman raised the issue about noticing. Is there any particular, he says he lives right next to the property. Is there any particular reason why he wasn't noticed?
Well, we typically, Councilmember Brett Felt, staff does notice surrounding property when projects like this are occurring. I don't know why he did not particularly get it. I don't know exactly where his property is, but there was, this, this project has been before this body at least three times, once for the condition use permit, to allow for the actual construction of the, the water treatment plant, and then before the Planning Commission, now today. So, I cannot address why he specifically, he may have been out of the range for the, for the, for the, for the notice, but he did come today...
Okay.
And was allowed to state his...
And what is, what is the typical noticing distance? With any, is there a standard? Is it a thousand?
There is. It's typically five hundred feet is what we use.
Around any project?
Around the surrounding property, correct.
Five hundred feet.
Subject property.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We have a, we could go to, okay, that does it for our timed items. And so, let's go back to, it's ten-twenty. Let's go back to general administration. And let's go to, no. We've done all that, too. Wow, we're, we're really flying. We, we, we could do that, but I think what I'd like to do first, okay, it is ten-twenty. All right, let's go ahead and do it. And for the joint meeting of the City of Fresno and the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, I turn it over to the chair. Member Baines? You want me to chair it? Okay. We have Successor Agency, staff here for the item, resolution approving the recognized All right. We just have one. We could do city. We don't have, is someone here for the, is someone here from transportation, for the transportation item? Okay. There you are. Let's go ahead and do item three H while we're waiting for, for Marlene to come. This is to approve the sale, three H, council, approximately fourteen and a half acres. It says Department of Public Transportation. Oh, three G.
That would be us.
Yeah. Let's do this one. This is the actions pertaining to the purchase and installation of ticket vending machines.
Good morning, Council. Gregory Barfield, Assistant Director of Transportation. There are three items, actually, before you today. One is to prove the sole source opportunity that the city manager has signed off on. Second is to award a contract to SB Corporation or Gin Fair for the purchase and installation of fifty-five ticket vending machines. And then the third item is approval of the annual appropriate appropriation resolution in the amount of four-point-three-five-nine-seven-hundred from grant funds from the Transit and Inter-City Rail Capital Program. As you know, council, this is the opportunity for the department to purchase the ticket vending machines needed for BRT. We ask for sole source because our fare boxes communicate, will communicate with this ticket vending machine and vice versa. We think that that's a very much needed program that we will need for our customers in order to improve service. As you know, the TVMs will allow for customers to purchase a ticket off-board, and then they have to show proof onboard. And we ask for your recommendation, we ask for your support.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais, where members are punching up.
Good morning, sir.
How are you this morning?
I'm fine.
So, what's the city's part of the expenditure on this?
Zero. This is all grant funds.
All grant funds?
All grant funds.
This is no matching? There's no matching?
No matching. It's all grant funds.
All right. Cool. Thank you.
Member Baines?
Hey, really quick, this sounds really cool, so is this going to be one of those things where I can buy my ticket like on my phone, or, and then show it like an app or something when I get on? Is it going to be something like that?
There are a lot of back office possibilities. We're trying to get to what we call more of a tap card, where it's more of a debit or ATM.
So you carry it with you all the time?
You carry it with you, yes.
And you can load it however you want?
Absolutely. That's what we do.
Listen, I make a motion to approve. This is probably long overdue. Thank you.
There's a motion to approve by Member Baines, and a second by Member Soria. Member Capriolio?
Good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
First, we miss you.
I miss you too.
And thanks for your continued service of the Fresno citizens through the Transportation Department, and the items contained in our agenda book answered all my questions, so I'll be happy to support this.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, the screen is clear. I just had a couple of questions because I've been stewing on the meeting that we had yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you coming to me because I always have a lot of questions regarding public transportation. I'm concerned, and I don't sit over there anymore, so I didn't have a chance to go over this with you. Well, no, I mean, it proves, is the, is the transportation guru, the original guru, look, I think we're going to have a lot of fare absconders. I think we're going to have five out of 10 that don't pay. So why can't we just make it free? Why go through all this process? Why not just say that if you're going to ride BRT on Blackstone or on Kings Canyon, you guys want to encourage ridership, and you want people to choose this over their car? I think we should just make it free. Because some municipalities and transit companies do, they have a free service. And free meaning the taxpayer somewhere paid for it. But I mean, if you, if you, okay, I understand that out of, out of every dollar that it takes us to run fax, 20, we get 20 cents at the fare box. So 80 cents that runs fax comes from grant, it comes from subsidy from higher levels of government. So, I mean, we're not making money, in fact, we're nowhere near to even breaking even in terms of collecting money at the fare box to run our bus company. So what I'm saying is, can we look, before we buy these things, can we look at models in other cities? We talked about, Mr. Marshall's very gracious to come to me yesterday, we talked about how Phoenix is spending millions of dollars to investigate and prosecute and go after fare absconders. I contend that the City of Fresno doesn't have the resources available to it, or the time, or the inclination to care about fare absconders. So why don't we just make this free and throw it open to everyone, and then maybe we'll attract the ridership that we want to see? Because right now, I've ridden the bus, I've spent some time at Manchester Transit Center, as I know our Transit Department has, I know that you have, and I know that there are some folks who don't pay. At least if we have a fare box on the bus, our driver can collect that fare, we can try to recover as much as we can. So my question is, could we put, would it be more economical, and would we recover more money if we just put the fare box on the vehicle, or if we just made BRT free? And I'll leave it to the professionals to answer those questions.
I will let you, I'll let you, Brian, whatever you. The tough part about a free and open system, you've got to be prepared to lose that 20%. So, and financially, we're not prepared to lose the 20%. The other part of your question is, there is a balance between fair collection and fair loss. So we've got to find that perfect balance where we are not spending more than what we're trying to recover. And I think the example I gave the other day was, Phoenix is spending about $6 or $7 million on fair loss, and they have no idea how much they're losing. So most likely, they're not losing like 5 or 6 million. So we recognize the balance, and we are prepared to figure out that balance to make sure we're not spending more than we're actually recovering.
So let me follow up with a couple just basic issues. One, yeah, you're going to have fare evasion. We have fare evasion now. We have fare evasion now.
Yes, we do.
And systems that run subways and light rails, BART, they have fare evasion. And, which is the reason why in this budget, the council has approved eight, eight officers who, who right now are doing a lot of other things in and around Manchester from a public safety standpoint. But at least four, five of them, nine? Oh, yeah, we added the sergeant. We'll start working on, they're working on the Blackstone corridor and dealing with other issues along the Blackstone corridor, so there's a benefit to the community in and around Blackstone. But as we implement BRT, those officers will be enforcing periodic fare checks, and then people will be cited, and we're working on an order, so they'll be coming forward to council that will ban people from the system in the event that they do. But the practical part, and Brian touched on it a little bit, you have a 20% fare box recovery that you have to achieve in order to qualify for federal dollars. And during the whole conversation around BRT, and I remember the conversation as though it was just yesterday, there were some underlying assumptions regarding fare box revenue, that you, as well as Councilmember Randow, were very concerned about the ability to sustain the operation after it's implemented. And we showed how, under our assumption, that while we believe that ridership, and we have every reason to believe ridership will increase along that corridor, that we didn't increase revenue proportionate to what we think the ridership would increase. In other words, we flatlined fares. If we went and turned around and just said, oh, well, we're just going to let the whole thing be free, that underlying assumption of, as far as the amount of revenue generated from the fare box would have to be reduced, which would run into question the ability to actually sustain this, as well as the FAX 15 service that we just implemented on Shaw and Cedar Avenue. So again, other systems have fare evasion issues, the president will not be unique, even systems that don't have light rail or don't have BRT, it is, it's a cost of doing business. It's no different than a retailer, who knows there's a percentage of their inventory that's going to walk out the door. But I don't see Forever 21 deciding, well, I'm only selling $15 tops, I might as well just go ahead and give them, a bunch of them away for free, because X percent of them are already walking out the door, and the cost of loss is greater than, at that point in time, it just, you have to rely on the majority of your customers being honest and forthright, and we believe the vast majority of our customers are.
Well, first, let me just speak to what you said about the police officers. As a city council member and as a member of the community, as a resident, I'm completely uncomfortable with using $80,000 a year employees, sworn police officers to check fares. I am completely opposed to that. That's, that's, that's a function of the cadet, I know the drivers, that's what they, they're supposed to do. If, if that happens, I'll be, I'll be unhappy, to say the least, because especially on Blackstone, like I mentioned, that murder that happened in front of Long John Silver's right there, we have an unsolved murder, we have prostitution, we have vagrancy issues, we have people camping out in front of businesses, I get calls weekly on these things. If we're using our Blackstone officers to check bus fares, if they spend 10 minutes doing that, I think that's an awful use of our, of our, of our police officer's time. And I just want to go on record saying that right now. Just in terms.
Let me add, though, the officer, while they may spend a percentage of their time doing fare checks, they'll spend the majority of their time dealing with those issues that you just addressed.
And I'm, I'm super excited about that.
Yeah, a cadet can't.
Okay. And, just in terms of, of the, of public safety, I just, I don't think that that's a good use of their time. And I bet council, I've got council colleagues that, that would agree with me on that. In terms of the off-vehicle collection and on-vehicle collection, how much would it slow down the vehicle to put the fare collection machine, the fare box, on the vehicle? I mean, are we going to lose more by collecting on the vehicle or collecting off the vehicle? So we're trying, so I understand that BRT, they pay off-vehicle, and then when the bus comes, they just get on, and that's the whole point of BRT, is to move them up and down Blackstone. But I mean, is, are we going to see fare evasion go up with the off-vehicle collection? Or are we going to see, it going to remain about the same than when we have a driver sitting there going, hey, where's your, where's your money? Put your money in?
I'm going to try to answer your question. I think I kind of have it.
I guess it is, how much would it slow us down to put the fare boxes on the BRT vehicle as opposed to doing this off, off-vehicle?
It could be considerable. It could be. There are systems like Austin, Texas, that are working on half of this system. There are fare boxes on the rear and the front of the bus, and then there are a number of other systems that say it just slowed them down too, too much, and they'd rather take the loss and build the ridership based on that. Again, I think what the city manager said is absolutely on target in the transit industry. There's going to be fair loss. There's going to be fair loss. And again, our issue is, how do we create the balance? How do we come up with a fair enforcement practice that will discourage the loss, and yet we recognize it will exist? So we can't go too far in terms of expenditure, and yet we've got to be efficient in terms of enforcement.
Well, let me say this in closing. I'll support this today, but I will not support the hiring of any city employees to do fare checking. I won't support the use of police officers to check for fares. We live in a post-prop 47 world and a post-prop 57 world, where you can fill a cart at Target and push it out the door and load it into your car, and that, you know, as long as your cart full of stuff is under 900 bucks, that's a misdemeanor. So unfortunately, any fare evasion is just fare evasion, and that's it, it's over. So I don't, I would, I would personally just, just ask our Transportation Department to, to consider that, and to consider at least, at least my idea, my position, when moving forward with this. I will oppose hiring new people just with the function of doing that, because, you know what, I realize that you're an enterprise fund, and I realize that you're an independent business unit, but when it, when it comes to who I want to hire, I want to go out and hire people to go bust substandard housing, I want to hire people to do those kinds of things, make a difference in the lives of people instead of, instead of going after fare evasion. I'll be interested to see, I may be a private citizen when we find out, but I'll be interested to see how much, I suppose I could say how much we're actually taking in, or how much we're losing, depending on whether you're a half-empty or half-full type of person. So, Member Bretafeld?
So the question, I guess it comes down to, what is the advantage of doing these tickets off the bus versus having the fare box? I mean, what's the advantage? Why not just leave, I mean, I assume I know the advantage, that it's speed and efficiency.
It is. That's the advantage, the amount of speed of boarding. Again, BRT is bus, the key word, rapid. So the idea is we make as many trips as possible, and an off-board fare collection gives you that advantage to be able to have that person with a ticket in their hand, they flow into the bus. Kind of another way to look at it is, when we build schedules, the schedules have, have time for people to actually pay their fare. That aggregate time on any given line probably averages about 30 minutes.
Are they showing the ticket to the bus driver, or is that process?
They're not.
Before they get there?
They just, they just board the vehicle, board the bus, keep their ticket available. A fare collector comes in and checks the tickets and says, okay, fine, you don't have a ticket, you know, you're cited, or whatever kind of remedy we come up with.
You mean, somebody's on the, on the bus checking?
I want to say a policeman, because it's not confined to a police activity. It could be a fare collector, a fare enforcement collector, it could be a supervisor who says, you did not pay your fare, and then they take whatever first step in the remedy of fare evasions that we apply.
But that's done on the bus?
That's done on the bus. It could, it could even be done in the, at the station, to be able to check tickets at the station to ensure that those who board actually have paid a fare.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not a law enforcement officer, but it would make sense to me that that process be done before somebody boards a bus. I mean, I don't think you want that, that confrontation to be taking place on a bus. And I mean, you know, we all know there's in public transportation in big cities, they've got this off, buying the purchase of the ticket before you get on there, they have all kinds of ways of screening it. So I mean, I think those issues really need to be thought out, and I agree with the council president. I don't think we want to be using sworn officers for this endeavor. I want them in, in the street and in neighborhoods. I don't think this is a good use of their time. If that was the plan, I don't know. But I mean, there are ways to have people that we can utilize to make sure that, you know, these, these tickets are being purchased, but I don't think we want sworn officers doing this.
Member Baines?
Thank you, Council President. So there are moments when the council president and I are in agreement. They tend to be rare, but, yeah, they're rare, but this is, this is one of them. I actually think that the council president is on to something, and obviously on a couple, a couple of points he made today, but particularly around a free, some sort of free service on specified corridors. I mean, I'm not, I probably couldn't be convinced to have an entire system that is free, but I can tell you that I've been in, been in certain cities, I was just in downtown Denver not too long ago, and obviously their main corridor, it's a, it's a free service. And honestly, I think we should probably look into that at some point in the near future, particularly with the traffic that we're going to expect downtown and some of our, you know, I don't know Fulton Street or what have you, maybe certain parts of the Blackstone corridor. But anyhow, I think it's worth looking into, and I wanted to commend you, Council President, for making that suggestion. I think that, that I've seen it done, and you move a lot of people very quickly, and it really, what I saw was incentive for people to spend money at the businesses. They moved up and down this corridor very quickly, very efficiently, from one point to the next, and they just bought stuff. They ate, they drank, they shopped, and so, you know, with like 10, five or 10-minute service, I think it was. So anyhow, wanted to, wanted to endorse that idea, that it's probably something we should look into.
Thank you, Member Baines. The screen is clear, but before we vote, I'm sure you're all excited that I have one more question. So what is the ridership estimate for BRT along Kings Canyon and along Blackstone? How many people are we expecting to ride BRT in the first couple of years? I mean ballpark, it doesn't, I mean, I'm just going to do some basic math in my head.
If I could, if you recall, for purposes of discussion, when we're looking at the amount of revenue that would be generated from ridership, we took a very conservative approach and said there would not be a, we did not increase the revenue based on ridership increases. We said, we just projected revenue being flat. So anything that happens as a result of an increase in ridership will mean net new revenue to the system.
Okay, so for the BRT, for purposes of the BRT paperwork, we just assume that it will be the same amount that ride traditional fax service up and down Blackstone and out Kings Canyon?
Right. From a budgetary standpoint.
Okay, do we know that number in human bodies, as it exists right now?
We can get you what the current council are right now, the ridership on Blackstone, as well as.
Because here's my, here's my thinking, and Member Baines gave me this idea while he was speaking. If, and what's, what's bus fare, $1.25, right? $1.25 to ride BRT, it's the same as to ride fixed route, traditional fax. Okay. So if, I mean, it seems to me we could almost achieve what Member Baines and I are talking about, and just make these complimentary routes. We're about to spend $4.3 million on these off-vehicle fare collection system. Would, could the $4.3 million be put, could it be used to buy those fares, and we would not have to put these machines in and go after fare invaders and write tickets and this whole rigmarole? Could we use this money to buy those fares and just say, people, ride BRT? No.
Unable.
And I guess the follow-up to that is, are there grants like that out there, and how is Denver doing it?
Denver provides free bus service along their mall. I know they belong near mall, but they don't, that's a very short route. A mile and a half.
Well, there's, the point is, there's people getting on vehicles and they're not paying.
Yeah. In a number of those situations where there are either free corridors or free service, they're supported either by a business community or by a specific tax that will defer that ridership cost.
You said the T-word to me. All right, forget it. Esmeralda?
Well, we would.
Well, we would still need these machines, right? Because if people are transferring to a different line that is not complimentary, they're going to have to pay. So at some point, they have to come, they have to come in contact. Okay. But, yeah, so it's...
So someone gets on, let's say they don't pay on BRT. They're going to have to get a Shaw Avenue.
At some point, yeah.
And right now, if they paid to get on BRT, they'll get a transfer, a free transfer to get, so you'll get your buck and a quarter, one way or another. Let's say they just decide to take the scenic route along, you know, Blackstone Avenue.
But I do like, you know, your concept. I think we need to explore, I believe I've mentioned it before, looking at, working with Fresno State and City College students, you know, looking at maybe letting those students ride for free and encouraging. So looking at that possibility. So I think that there's opportunities for us to explore if it's not the corridors, but looking at, or at a very minimal rate, I would explore that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Brettafeld?
Yeah, you being in enterprise, are you hiring police officers through the enterprise to do this work?
Not that work, not fare collection work, no. What happens right now is, we recognize the Blackstone corridor needs a cleanup. So the eight officers, the nine officers that we have right now do two things. One, they ensure overall safety on the system. That's four who do that, and we have another four who are going to do essentially kind of community relations work to clean up the corridor, to clean up a segment of Blackstone where we want to make sure that BRT is a desirable system to use.
But how, are they being paid out of the enterprise?
They are.
Okay, so those officers are not being funded through the general fund money?
That's absolutely right.
And are these just recently hired as a result of this?
We had four or five already, then we had to wait for other hiring to complete the other four, right? Because PD was trying to hire a position, so the other four just recently came on board.
That's absolutely right. And again, I want to make sure we're clear that the four, the ongoing four, have been the, they've ensured safety on the system, not fare collection. Not fare collection, but they've ensured safety on the system. Periodically, there's a driver assault, or there's a conflict that can't be resolved. It's escalated beyond what our supervisor's capable of, so therefore that PD officer goes out to resolve that incident.
And the point that I'm making is, there's eight or nine officers that it sounds like are being hired out of your enterprise fund as opposed to the general fund. They're related to the BRT and work along Blackstone, which is obviously needed. So in some sense, this might be a creative way of adding new officers that isn't tapping into the general fund. If not in addition to their work with BRT, they can actually be out in the community providing services along Blackstone.
Essentially, that's what we saw.
Yeah. That's exactly the idea. In order to encourage ridership, the environment in which that ridership is going to be generated from needs to feel safe. And we know that at this point in time, there are some challenges on Blackstone Avenue. So the idea behind this was I hire four more officers and a sergeant to not only deal with the incidents that are occurring on the bus, but also start dealing with some of those other issues that are occurring in and around the Blackstone corridor and in those adjacent neighborhoods. So it is a way for us to help provide an additional level of public safety using the enterprise, and if council realizes, remembers, we're doing the same thing with public utilities, where the public utilities department is funding three additional police officer positions as well.
And what are they, how are they utilizing?
They are primarily dealing with folks who are going through the neighborhoods and vagrants who are dealing and stealing recyclable materials. But while they go through the neighborhood in advance of our solid waste trucks, if they see someone breaking into a vehicle, or they see a burglary, or they see anything going on, they can respond to that. They're not just going to go, well, it's not within my responsibility. They are full sworn officers responsible for doing exactly what an officer, so in a lot of ways, they're a neighborhood B-cop for the time they're in the neighborhood.
So I mean, for me, I think this is an innovative way of adding some police officers that we have, I mean, we have a need along Blackstone. People need, you know, the neighborhoods need to be patrolled. They're not being taken from the general fund. I don't know, it seems like kind of an innovative way to be adding eight, nine officers, three in public utilities. I kind of like it. We need police officers, and if this is an innovative way to do that, I think we ought to do that. I mean, clearly, we, all of us, want more police officers in our districts and patrolling, but this is a way that they're going to be trolling along your district, I think. And it's, I mean, I understand the concerns, but these are not coming from general fund monies to fund these officers that ought to be out in our neighborhoods, yet they're still in the neighborhoods to some degree.
Thanks. Member Brandow?
So my question's completely different. Brian, I think I need to ask the question to Bruce. So Bruce, and I don't want to use the phrase, here we go again, but we're right there. It's deja vu. What, I asked the Swearengen administration for two years after we did a survey, when are we going to have a revaluation of our bus service in the city? Is the Brand administration committed to that?
Yes.
Is it in the first 100 days?
Brian, where are we at with hiring the consultant to start beginning the public outreach effort?
I believe that's the end or the beginning of February, and we hope to have that effort done by, like, mid-year.
Right. So we're going to be coming back to council in February with a contract to hire a consultant who will help the department conduct the public outreach meetings that are required under Title VI.
Now, so are we going to scrap the previous?
No. No, this is to take that, to take that proposed restructuring out to the community, because you have to under Title VI. Whenever you're going to impact potential riders or neighborhoods by changes in a system, you have to take that out to the public. So the department, so if you recall, about a month or so ago, we finally said, okay, let's just go do this. So the department had to issue an RFP to hire a consulting firm that lead those community discussions in the districts and other venues. So that'll be back in February for council to award that contract, and then we'll have a timeline as to how long that will take, and then we'll come back with a final decision and recommendations related to that restructuring. And that will probably be by the end of the year, you think, Mr. Marshall?
Before then, should be around September or so.
Okay.
Well, it seems like every other week, we're taking votes on buses in the city, and I do realize that some of them are BRT votes, some of them are fax votes, but this has been a long, you know, it's been a long framework to get this work done. So for the new council members, we've been, we tackled this, we spent money on this two and a half years ago to do a consultant. We've got the recommendation from the consultant, and since then, we've been sitting in our chairs. So, all right. I mean, just going forward, so here's the only view that, where I come from, from that is, we're taking massive amounts of votes on buses, the community's unclear, and we're going to hypothetically reverse ourselves with the discussion that started today and install infrastructure now that we might not need tomorrow. I'd rather just look at a comprehensive plan and then, as a council, have a critical debate and then move forward, even if I'm outnumbered on that day, but at least we would have a plan that talks about comprehensively buses in the city of Fresno, from El Paso to Fulton to Blackstone, everywhere. That's what I'm going to prefer. So I have a difficult time continuing to take a hodgepodge approach to bus transportation in the city.
Well, I apologize that we apparently haven't been very clear as to what and how we are progressing. Blackstone BRT, Ventura BRT has been a topic of a lot of discussion. It was a very comprehensive plan, a lot of conversation, a lot of reengineering of the original plan in order to meet all the expectations of the council. We, for example, we eliminated the dedicated lane along Ventura-Kings Canyon, but the TVMs, the purchase of the TVMs and the use and how this particular part of the system was going to operate has been a topic of a lot of discussion and dialogue, which is why, you know, we moved forward. And we even had a conversation about how we're going to fund the TVMs. So that's not new. Same thing when it comes to the new service that we just deployed on Shaw Avenue and on Cedar. It was a CMAC-funded program. The council approved that project. We made it very clear we were going to 15-minute headways. During the budget deliberations, we talked about how we were not only going to 15-minute headways on Cedar and Shaw, that we're going to implement BRT, and we also talked about running later at night, and we also talked about how we are going to improve frequencies on the weekend. So everything we discussed in budget is going forward. The only thing that was kind of left hanging was the timeline associated with going back now with the approval of the general plan and evaluating the current system and seeing whether or not it still meets the needs of the community based on land use decisions that have been made over the last 30 or 40 years, rather than, as you would say, a hodgepodge approach in which we continue to use the bus system or try to use the bus system to chase development. So we're committed to doing that, and as Mr. Marshall indicated, that last component, that, and I understand your concern, will be brought back to council in September, but the core of the system, BRT and the improved frequencies on Shaw and on Cedar Avenue, that's something we've been talking about for at least a year, if not longer, and was codified by council when you adopted the budget earlier this year.
Yeah, I understand. You're telling me that, Steve, you took part in a lot of discussions, and you made a lot of votes, and I am agreeing with that. Yeah, I did. But there's still, because we're, so we're talking about, the thing that was just done last week, the higher speeds on Shaw and where, what other street?
Cedar.
Cedar.
Not necessarily higher speeds, but improved frequencies, yes.
Faster headways, yeah. Higher speeds, right.
Good.
More faster headways, right? I get it. So there's that, there's bus rapid transit, and then there's fax, state of flux in fax, several different areas. But, you know, all of this stuff adds up to confusion, really. No, and you might think, Brandow, you're confused. And I'd say, yeah, I am. I am confused. It's all friggin' confusing. When are we going to have the overhaul that we've been talking about for a couple of years, where we say to the community, this is what we're doing moving forward?
That will be back before the council with final recommendations.
Can I jump in really quick? And I hate to do this, Council President, but you and I have talked about this for a long time, and I headed up the Transportation Subcommittee with council members, Soria and Cabralio, and in some respects, I understand your confusion, but in some respects, I don't, because, not rehashing everything Bruce said, but we've come, like, for the last 18 months, moving that entire thing along. And I think what maybe I'm hearing you say is, well, what I understand is happening is that in the interim, there are things that are happening too. So it's not like nothing was going to happen and there was going to be a comprehensive overhaul. But we sat in the subcommittee with Rick Steitz, with Brian Marshall.
When did you guys meet last?
Well, we met last right before we, right before the recommendation was put forth us. We, the subcommittee is what helped craft that recommendation. We were very instrumental, we were very instrumental in putting that forth, and in order for us to have a comprehensive overhaul, and that's what we worked on, in order for that to happen, we have to go out to the public. And so now we are in the middle of starting the public process. So I think, I think I get your confusion somewhere, but I just wanted to reassure you that everything we talked about is actually happening and is going right along that line. But in the interim, the transportation department is still making improvements to the system.
Got it. Okay. All right. And at this point, council, I'm just going to call for a point of order, and we've gone way off of the agenda item on this one. I know that transit items are very meaningful to this city council. I mean, they really are. And so that's why whenever one is on the agenda, people are compelled to speak on them. Member Brettafeld, do you have something to wrap it up?
One final point I mentioned to you yesterday, kind of throw this out there. In District Six, Clovis Community College, Willow Avenue, there are students out there that when we were out there many times, they said, we need bus service out here too. So it's something that we're looking into. We're already reaching out to Clovis Community College. I mean, it's obviously something that's a need for students out there, so it's something we'll talk about down the road. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to call for the question. What do you, Member Chavez?
Just closing comments. I don't know if my colleagues have had a chance to do that, but I actually had a chance to do this a couple of months, and I would really encourage every single one of my colleagues to actually ride the bus. I had a chance to actually jump on Route 28 and kind of get a firsthand feel of what it's like to be a rider, and I learned a lot about our system. And I'm looking forward to working with you and working with our business owners. I know the council member, Libby, had some issues on Blackstone. I want to avoid those on Ventura and Kings Canyon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The screen is clear. The original item was about the vending machines. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six to one, and it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Transportation Department. With that, let's go ahead and take this item of the successor agency very briefly. It's just one item. It was the 1020 item. Marlene?
Thank you. This is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, 1112, for the period of July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018. SB 107 changed the reporting period from six months to 12-month timeframe. So this report is the second that we've implemented, we're implementing pursuant to 107. The total obligations listed in this report totaled $6,94,116. This total primarily represents the repayment of loans back to the city that were taken for redevelopment purposes. So $6 million in obligations. The, when this $6 million is subtracted from what we think the total projected increment will be during that period, it nets about $10 million, and that amount of residual will be divided among the taxing entities. The city receives about 20%. So of this total, we're anticipating you'll receive about $2 million in July. That basically concludes the report. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the successor agency on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll return it to the dais. The screen is clear. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve from Member Baines, second from Member Soria. Screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Marlene. Okay, and now to the main event. I think the main event today, anyway, is the, let's go ahead and do this now because we have folks here from downtown. Let's do the parking item right now. This is item 3E, actions pertaining to parking fees. Adopt a finding of no possibility of significant effect on the environment per staff determination pursuant to section of the California SEQA. Okay, this is Darm.
If I could, before Del begins with his presentation, two things for the new council members to bring this discussion into context. About a year or so ago, as rest of the council knows, and I'm infamous for this, a facilities assessment was done of all of our parking assets. That assessment came back and identified $10 million of deferred capital repairs on our garages. At that time, we told council we would be coming back with some recommendations to help fund that very long list of deferred capital. In fact, as part of the FY, I'm trying to get 16 carryover, council actually allocated $450,000 of general fund dollars to begin making some of the repairs that are on that list. For example, Garage Nine right now, which is the one over on Van Nessner, as you ever said, has actually been temporarily repaired because of structural issues with the upper deck beginning to come down or beginning to cause some problems. In other words, it's beginning to fail, the weight of that. So that work needs to be completed. And the other point I wanted to make is, the parking fund is no longer an enterprise. It's not an enterprise department. It is a general fund department. So when we start talking about deferred capital repairs, and that study showed $1 million of... dollars of ongoing capital repairs, if you smooth it around, you'll analyze that over 10-year period, that is a million dollars of general fund revenue that is competing with other priorities. And so I just ask the council to take that into consideration when you're listening to Mr. Esther Brooke's presentation, because again, there is $10 million of deferred capital, there's a million dollars, if you smooth that over 10 years, it's a million dollar obligation or liability, and that this department is a general fund department. So if we're looking to try to find ways to augment other general fund services, such as public safety, I would ask you to pay close attention to the amount of revenue that could potentially be generated, which we also believe is very comparable to what the market would do if it was these, in fact, we're a little below the market, even with our recommendation, but it's exactly what the market would do to deal with that shortfall, but in consideration of what we believe the market forces will bear. So with that, Mr. Esther Brooke, it is all yours.
Thank you, City Manager. I will cross out half of my presentation. Council President, council members, good morning. I'm Del Estherbrook from Parking Services. It's exciting, as we continue with our downtown revitalization efforts, that we can hopefully offer one-hour free parking at three of our parking garages located around Fulton Street. We hope this effort will create some buzz and lead to bigger and better things downtown. In fact, we have the support of our downtown businesses through our downtown partnership. So just to reiterate what the City Manager stated, in 2015, we reached out through Walter P. Moore, a nationally renowned parking analysis company, to do a facility study for us, which came up with the 10-year and $10 million plan to take care of all the deferred maintenance and bring everything up to code and keep it there for a while. The $10 million is a pretty big hit. The revenues for this plan are paid for by the general fund. Again, as the City Manager mentioned, we're no longer an enterprise. So we took a look at how could we start mitigating some of these costs. So again, we utilizing the expertise of Walter P. Moore, we conducted another analysis, a parking analysis, looking at other cities, our rates, everything under the sun, to come up with a mitigation set of measures. And we come up with some strategies. And those strategies do include the tiered marking, tiered parking program for parking meters, which, to keep it simple, you have a high, a low, and a couple of rates in between. And wherever it's a high usage, that's where the highest pay, and then goes down to a lower rate where the least amount of usage occurs. We also took a look at establishing a baseline. We have multiple contracts with everybody from the Small Business Administration to the County of Fresno, et cetera, to come up with a baseline on what we charge for the contracts because they were undervalued. And we also took a look at the future contracts and maybe having a percentage or a CPI input to help us take care of the cost of business. And finally, we increased our parking, our parking permit substantial amount. We've also committed, and we're constantly doing analysis, to eliminate some of the meters downtown that are no longer needed, they're outside of the busy zone, so to speak, where we can put in some two-hour parking zones where it's free parking for two hours. That completes my general comments. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this issue? I have a yellow card for Aaron Blair. You want to come forward? For the record, state your name and address.
All right, thank you. Aaron Blair, President and CEO for Downtown Fresno Partnership, 845 Fulton Mall. Our board members actually discussed this item at length at our December meeting and asked me to write a letter, which I've submitted to you all, supporting these changes. There's a couple of critical things for us that, obviously, the hour-free parking is one of the biggest steps forward that we've seen the city do in terms of supporting some of the efforts of revitalization of Fulton Street. And also, we understand the philosophy behind some of the rate structure changes that need to happen, and we believe that some of those things will also lead to enhancement of the parking structures themselves and also allowing for smart meters and ability for people to pay with their phone and credit cards, things of that nature. So I'm just here to lend our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. The screen is clear. Really? Okay. The screen is clear. Is there a motion to approve the item?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Member Capriolio, second by Member Soria. Now people are going to punch up. Okay, Member Bretifel, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on this. So part of this, obviously, is to, as Bruce was saying, rectify, fix some of the parking structures that have been ignored for a long time, is a $9 or $10 million, correct?
That's correct.
The problem I have with this is I'm very concerned about the message this sends to people, that we are increasing our parking fees. People already, I mean, I think many of us hear the complaints about parking meters. And I don't necessarily have a problem with parking meters in our downtown. I think many cities have them. They have thriving downtowns, and people want to be there, and it is a source of revenue. And obviously, the city has to have revenue to operate. But I'm concerned that we're sending out a message that we want people to come downtown, but now we're going to charge them more fees to be downtown. And I think that's, that's the wrong message to be sending. I think as we want to generate revenue in our downtown and people to use parking meters, I think we have to find amenities to bring them downtown. And that's, that's a task for us. It's a task that we had when I served some time ago on the council, and it's an ongoing task. There's been tremendous strides, obviously, in the downtown. Great things are happening, from shops and restaurants opening to hopefully the Fulton Mall becoming Fulton Street. Hopefully, that will make some changes. I hope so. People are buying buildings downtown. We have a multipurpose stadium, well, baseball stadium downtown. And there are a lot of things that are happening downtown, but there needs to be more to happen downtown in order to bring people downtown. And I just don't think raising parking fees is the way to do that. I think when we bring people downtown and they're using our parking meters, that's a way to increase revenue, is by having more people downtown and using the parking meters and using our garages. And the only way that's going to happen is, as I said, by having them want to be downtown and bringing amenities to the downtown for them to visit. So this, I think, is the wrong direction. I think when you raise fees or taxes, we know that it decreases the use. When you subsidize something, it tends to increase it. We all want to be business and user-friendly. We talk a great deal about being business-friendly at City Hall and being a user-friendly. This is not the way to do that. This is exactly the opposite message that we're sending to the community. So I'm all for fixing our parking garages, and we need to be making sure that we maintain them. But I don't think raising fees on our parking facilities is the way to go. I think trying to draw people downtown by providing them the kinds of amenities that exist in other cities, like San Jose or any, any, any city. They've turned their downtowns around and people come there. And so we've got a long way to go. We made a lot of progress. There's much more progress to be made, but raising parking fees is not the way to get people downtown, and that's what we want to do. So I think it's, it's an anti-user message, it's an anti-business message, and it's not one I can support today.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of questions and then some comments. I agree that it is important that we support trying to attract folks to come to downtown. I just want to ask a couple of questions. Bruce, can you remind us how much deferred maintenance we have in terms of our parking structures?
Right now, it's, it's at $10 million in present value. So as time goes on, the cost of that will actually go up.
And we have to find, in some way, a way to fund these, and it would probably only come from our general fund, right, if we don't adjust any of the current fees, right?
That's correct. It's a general fund department, so that's, that's the source of revenue that would be used.
And so I know that it's always hard to make votes to raise fees and to raise taxes, but I think that for a long time, people have kicked down the can, you know? And we've talked about these, our, you know, council being that council that really makes those hard decisions to fix the issues that our city faces. And I think that we've heard from the business community that they support this, you know, these changes. I think that it's great that we're finally going to upgrade our parking meters. We're way far behind from other metro cities. We go visit Sacramento, we go visit San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, all these other cities, where they're up with technology. And the city of Fresno is way behind. And I think that it's finally time that we do come, you know, and use the new technology so that we do make it easier. Because I think that even existing, using the existing meters is very challenging for folks. People get parking tickets. And so I think that we're going to address not only the maintenance issue, but really make it much more pleasant for people to visit the downtown area. So, you know, I made the second to the motion. I would actually like to suggest that if this does pass today, that any increased revenues is actually dedicated to continue the maintenance of the parking structures. We know we have a long way to go, $10 million. So I would suggest that we, that this council makes that decision to ensure that anything that really comes from parking is invested back so that we continue to make a dent in improving our assets. There are assets, and we have to figure out a way to make sure that they're up to par, that we're maintaining them. And I think that this is our opportunity for us to be bold and to really continue the work that we've been doing as a council to address the challenges that, for a long time, we've kind of kicked down the road. So I, again, just will be supportive. Obviously, I've made the motion if my colleague would accept the amendment to the motion.
Yes. I discussed this with City Manager Rudd, and it would be the most expeditions appropriate way to solve a problem and not kick the can down the road. So that's the way we roll, and that will be part of my motion.
Thank you.
Here next is Member Brandow, followed by Member Baines.
Thank you, Council President. So, Councilmember Bretifel, I made, you know, we had this discussion, seems like three weeks ago, it was probably six weeks ago or nine weeks ago. And I agree with your points, or essentially, we're saying the same thing. And I don't know that anything's changed in the six or nine weeks to really convince me otherwise. So there's just a philosophy difference, I think, on council and with members of the administration on the best interest of getting folks downtown and then charging them when they're down here. So I agree with your points. I think it's a very, and I made this case, so I don't want to really belabor it was not that long ago. I think it's a very tender time to be increasing rates downtown before we have folks coming downtown. I mean, once you have the amenities that we all want to see downtown, once you have those amenities, I think it's a little bit easier to say your rates are going to go up a little bit, okay? But in front of those amenities, I think it's a difficult time. So just like a couple of weeks ago, I'm not going to be supportive of that today. I do want to ask, I thought of this, you know, we're going to get the $70 million that we're ripping off from California businesses due cap and trade. So that $70 million, can that help take care of our parking problem in downtown Fresno?
Because the intent of the cap and trade was to deal with, one, disadvantaged communities, and, two, to provide some greenhouse benefit. I don't know how making an improvement to a parking facility or a parking garage would meet that threshold.
This is government. We just have to wave a little magic dust, and we can make that work. Let's, we should consider finding a way of taking this cap and trade money, finding a way of making a green project out of, out of the, put some solar, Oliver, on top of the parking garage, and then divest the city of Fresno of parking. It's been a big albatross around our neck for decades, but we'll continue. I'm not going to support it today, anyway, so I'm not going to keep pontificating.
You are on one today. Member Baines and then Member Chavez.
Well, listen, oh my gosh, somebody write this down, Steve Brandow asked for solar. So I think we should, we should all mark, we should all mark this moment today. I'm with you, man. So listen, I'm going to be supportive. Thank you, Councilmember Soria for the amendment, and Councilmember Capriolio for accepting it. I think that that is the intent of the, of this move today, is to make sure that we can, can fix, can adjust the deferred maintenance issues. And, you know, I do want to, and Councilmember Brandow, and he and I have this debate all the time, so, and Gary, now I'll have the debate with you two since you're here. But listen, the businesses are asking for us to do this, first of all. So while I understand that the philosophical standpoint, businesses aren't, aren't really saying that they're worried about running customers away. Secondly, there's never a good time to raise rates. So let me just say that. And I've known Councilmember Brandow long enough to know that, you know, if we waited till everybody came down there, then he would say, we're raising rates and we're going to run them away. So you would say just the opposite if downtown were thriving and bustling. So I don't think that there's ever a good time to raise rates. But we need to do it because for as much as my friends that may have philosophical differences with me on this, we do agree that the, that our city should run more like a business. And it really makes no sense for us to have these parking garages and parking meters, and we know that they don't break even. I don't know, I don't, I have not yet heard the rationale that, that we should knowingly charge less than what it costs to maintain and operate this system. That doesn't, to me, that doesn't, that's not in line with the things that we're trying to do here, certainly from my standpoint. Now, if we want to just give parking away and want to say that we know we're free, you know, Councilmember Libby is on the free kick today, then, then let's, then let's, let's have that discussion. But if we're going to have this, this, we have an operation, then to some degree, we need to be responsible and make sure that it pays for itself. So I'm fully supportive of ensuring that we are being responsible and thoughtful legislators and making sure that our assets pay for themselves. However, there's a caveat, and Bruce and I have talked about this a little bit. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure we should be even owning the parking garages. So I will say that. So long-term, well, well, listen, on that point, no, on that point, I think you, you have some validity. I've long said, and Bruce knows this, we've had this debate about parking garages for a few years now, that, that I'm not, I have not been convinced that we do it well at all. It's just not our thing. This is, you know, none of them have made any money, really. So I think that it's probably a service that we should not be doing. And ultimately, while I'm supportive of this action today, for sure, because it makes sense, and we need to be, we need to be making these types of decisions to be responsible. But long-term, certainly, and either, maybe even in the midterm, I think what we should be looking at is divesting ourselves of our parking garages. And I know that there are arguments to the contrary to that, and I get it, you know? There was, you want parking continuity and, you know, I get it. However, I think that there are models out there that probably exist to allow us to do that. So I'm supportive today with the caveat that I'm going to be, I don't know how, you know, it's not going to happen while I'm here. I'll be gone before that ever happens, but I think that we should be looking for probably a different, a different business model for our parking garages.
Well, we're having a garage sale. I think there's, there's, there's good parts and bad parts to this. I think the good parts is that we will be incorporating technology into our parking meters. I think that's good. I think Councilmember Soria is right, we are behind the curveball, so to speak. But my question, and Councilmember being touched on a little bit, maybe it's to you, Bruce. So, so the need for this, I understand the argument being made, is for the deferred maintenance that we have on the parking garages. So what are we looking at as far as revenue, what this would yield on a yearly basis, and looking at the long-term plan? Because I think Councilmember Bates is right. I don't think the city of Fresno should be in the parking business. And, and so maybe in the future, we could look at selling this, but obviously, nobody's going to purchase these parking garages with the deferred maintenance costs associated with them. So how long does it take with this move to get us to a place where they are in condition that somebody would think that they are marketable?
Your first question, Councilman, regarding the revenue stream, the meters will probably provide a little over $300,000 per year to kick it off. With the other things that we've got set up, it could go as high as a little over 3/4 of a million dollars per year. Now, in the 10-year plan that we have for Walter P. Moore, then we would work with our facilities and contractors, we have designated high priority, medium priority... facilities and contractors, we have designated high priority, medium priority and low priority to get us that point 10 years down the road. So this year and next year, there's some heavy-duty revenues that will have to go into taking care of the major things. I can give you an example, in the Spiral Garage, the stairs are pretty steep and people like using the handrails and you also have a problem with the homeless in there. So the handrails have actually broken apart from the concrete. That's a priority item and that's an expensive one. There are also some rebars that show in through the floor. Again, that's a priority item, but we've prioritized them in three levels that we will correct over the next 10 years.
So let me also, so in totality, all the changes are projected to generate a net new $866,000. Again, the study showed that if you annualize this in today's dollars, there's about a million dollars a year of need. Dell, the last time we had any kind of change in either meter or parking rates was 10 years ago. If you just take time value of money, each year, and with all due respect to the council members, it's the same conversation the previous councils have had about raising rates, parking rates in particular. And one of the approaches, or the difference approach that we took this year, and, you know, I'm going to be infamous for this term that Councilmember Baines gives me credit for, but it is, it's a, it's a basic business practice, it's called a sinking fund. And this council finally, this council has finally recognized that when you build an asset, there is a cost associated with owning that asset. And unfortunately, until recently, this organization never recognized that expense. So we haven't increased rates for the last 10 years and I know it's painful and the reason, and for all the reasons why. But there is a fiscal, a financial reality of when you own assets, there is an expense associated with owning those assets. And if you do not do anything in order to maintain those assets, they continue to deteriorate. And as they deteriorate, they get to the point where people don't want to use them because they don't feel secure. So it is, in a lot of ways, for me, very pragmatic. We own these assets, in the condition they're at right now, we would probably have to pay someone to take them because they'd have to look at their gun and put 10 million bucks into them. And then how much are they going to be able to, how long would they be able to recover that cost? Long-term, once they get into better condition, yeah, the opportunity to sell these, along with the meters, because I'd have to sell both, because they'd be competing against each other, is a long-term conversation this council has. But right now, we haven't increased rates for 10 years, we believe this will generate almost enough to cover that ongoing liability or expense without having to defer additional dollars from the general fund to cover this at the expense of some other services that we want to provide, whether it's public safety or parks or repaving streets or whatever. So for me, it's kind of basic as far as, from a business standpoint, what we need to do. But again, I understand the philosophical issue and the concern. All I know is, as your city manager, I've got some assets out here that need a lot of work and a lot of help.
So even if we take those numbers of the 866,000, I mean, obviously, we'll still have possession of this in the next couple of years, so the maintenance need will still keep ongoing. So that won't even be enough in the 10-year span to pay off the 10 million of deferred maintenance.
Right, that's why you annualize that, but that's why I said it's also, in here is a CPI index that will allow us at least to keep up with inflation. So we believe at the end of a 10-year period, we should have these garages at least at a point where they're in good shape. But again, there's life cycle and replacement costs and we're going to, we'll continue to talk, you, for the council who's been sitting here listening to me jabber about this for way too long, that is an expense, that's that sinking fund, there's life cycle and replacement costs that are associated with owning assets. This gets, this is the first step towards that. And I agree with, and Mayor Brand would agree, that this additional revenue that's generated from this would go back into these garages and/or technology then to make it easier for people to use. Because quite honestly, unless you're walking around with a lot of change, we even have a machine down on the first floor.
Right.
To make change because people don't carry cash and very few people carry a bunch of quarters to pay for the meters. So it's an investment in a system that needs a lot of help and it's an investment in a division that is now a general fund department. And the reason it's a general fund department is because when we're going through all the unfunded, all the negative fund balances, guess where one of them were? In the parking garage operation. And we had to bring it in and pay off that debt as part of the other debt that was, had incurred over a number of years. Thank you, Council.
Well, and I'd be interested in seeing how this program pans out in about a year or so, just to see if yielding the results that, that we want. Because I think a big deterrent also, as Member Brandow, Betterfeld mentioned, was you've got to have amenities that people want to come to in downtown, right? Right now, most people come here for government and for, you know, other departments that are located down here. But then what happens is they also get a nice welcome to downtown Fresno ticket on there if they don't carry around a roll of quarters. So I think this will, this will help in incorporating some of those technologies into that. So with that, President.
Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I appreciate all the comments and the suggestions and we've, we've discussed this time and time again, but we come back to the same point. The parking lots are a mess. We don't want to tap general fund because we want more police, we want more fire, we want more park amenities, et cetera, et cetera. So somehow, you have to make those two mesh and that comes down to a tough decision. And the tough decision is, again, are we going to kick the can down the road and let them continue to deteriorate, go to our general fund dollars that we're so protective of to make this better? To me, it's, it's a tough decision, but you've got to make them. That's what we're elected to do and that's what we have to do to preserve our community and make it better. So I don't want to tap into that general fund. I think this will decrease the need for general fund dollars and I think we're going to get that sinking fund, maintain that parking lot, get it back, all of them, to where they should be. And then these other ideas about sales and different things, so be it. But we've got to get it available and ready to be sold, if nothing else. We're not even close to that now. So with that in mind, I'd like to call for the question.
Thank you. The screen is clear, I have a couple of things that I would like to say. You want to go ahead?
Yeah.
I just, you know, want to point out, what we don't know is by raising these fees are how many people are not going to come down here as a result of that. I know you've got projections of what we're going to generate from the increase, but we don't know how many are not going to be coming as a result. Likewise, on the reverse side, if we sent out a different message in terms of lowering our parking fees and sent out a message of people coming downtown, we don't know how many people, more people we would generate coming to the downtown area and thereby increasing our revenues. And these are philosophical issues. The last thing, you know, Steve had mentioned about the cap and trade. You know, Bruce, I wouldn't rule that out, that there's not some way that there is a connection, because when you're looking to park all over downtown, that obviously is emitting all kinds of carbon. And if you go to a garage and you immediately go there and park there, I mean, you are saving. Listen, I think that the reality is, this is the government's game and we ought to play the game in order to benefit the taxpayers that we represent. I don't think it's a stretch, when you think about that kind of thing, that it is a cap and trade issue and one that we could make the argument and solve our problem with those funds. I really think there's a way that it could be done. Because it makes, I don't know, intuitively, it makes sense that if we're not driving all over the city looking for parking spots, cars are not emitting these kinds of emissions into the air and that's exactly what these programs are about. Is there some way that we can really, seriously look into that?
Again, we can look into it. My understanding of the cap and trade funds and how they can be used, that would be a stretch and I know, I got two other folks who.
I can lend a little, I'm on the airboard and share the airboard, so I know the cap and trade funds a lot. I'll tell you that the real difficult part about the suggestion is that cap and trade is, is designed to discourage driving. So it's going to be really, really difficult to talk about major investment in parking garages, which are encouraging driving, when cap and trade is, is really on the other side of that very basic argument. So, you know, unless somebody has some really creative ideas about, you know, how the parking garages would continue to discourage driving, it'd be, it'd be tough.
And I was going to add, even if it was, it's one-time money. And the problem with one-time money is exactly that. There is an ongoing need to fund the cost of maintaining and owning these assets. So you may be able to inject some one-time money, but the ongoing need, it will continue because as you replace different sub-assets or things within a garage, you have to come back over a period of time, it's life cycle cost. You have to come back, I'll use paint, okay? You paint a garage today, you have to come back within five to 10 years and repaint that garage. You have to redo asphalt, you have to redo things. So this is a way to fund that program on an ongoing basis, recognizing the cost of owning these assets and these life cycle costs, which again, unfortunately, this organization for many, many years never recognized or wanted to recognize the ongoing costs of owning assets such as garages or parks or other facilities that we own. And as a result, what we have, we've done this in the past and we, we're going to do it this year, which we've issued bonds. And now I'm using bond money, probably at 6% for a one-time fix. And by the time I get done spending that money on a 30-year note, the asset that I've repaired will probably be at the end of life before I pay off the debt that I incurred to fix it in the first place.
Well, this cap and trade money, I do think you could make that connection and it would be one-time money to fix the garages and then you could sell the asset at that point because now you fixed it. So I think that's the way we ought to be looking at this and we could solve the problem.
I think, I'm next.
You are, but councilmembers, folks are punching up for the, maybe the third round. So one of the members has called for the question, wants to vote and move on. So just want to caution councilmembers before we begin the third round, that some members are ready to go. Thank you.
I'll keep my remarks very brief, but I just, I'm glad that Bruce mentioned that it is one-time money. I would be in strong opposition to put cap and trade dollars for a parking lot. The last thing that I would like to see is a headline, you know, in a statewide publication saying the city of Fresno is using cap and trade dollars to renovate parking lots. We've seen, you know, other headlines like when RDA monies were being used to, you know, create golf courses. I just, I just don't think it's the best use of money when we know that we have lacking infrastructure in many of our disadvantaged neighborhoods. We know that we want to upgrade our infrastructure to attract private investment into our downtowns and other areas of the city. And we know that we are facing a housing crisis here in the city of Fresno and the entire state with affordability. That's what those dollars should be used for, that was the intent of the legislature. And I just want to make sure that, for the record, folks know that I would not support using cap and trade or even thinking of using cap and trade for upgrades in parking lots. I think that we have to be forward-thinking, we have to think about the ongoing, ongoing maintenance and this will not solve the issue. Thank you.
So now a couple of councilmembers, so for starters, multiple councilmembers from all walks of life believe that the city of Fresno should not be in the parking business. That should be our goal. That is our focus, how to get the hell out of the parking business. Here's an opportunity, we go to the state, we need to make better deals, we make terrible deals, okay? We need to make better deals, we need to go to Sacramento and say, "We need 10 million out of this 70 million." Look the other way, Jerry, we want to dump this crappy parking and then, you know, we'll continue to be affable as you bring this train into our city. You know, make some deals. Yeah, bingo, yeah, exactly. Instead, we can continue, we could continue doing what we've been doing.
Oh, great, the screen is clear.
Take a vote.
You know, I, I have to say a couple of things and this is, this is the, I have kind of a two-part thing that I'd, that I'd like to get into. And the first one is, we are told as councilmembers over and over and over and over that people are just ready to come downtown, that they're just chomping at the bit to come downtown. And when, when our constituents that we meet say, "Gosh, you know, I hate going down there because I hate the parking and I hate the one-way streets." We come here as representatives of the people and we tell the experts, "Well, people hate coming downtown because they hate the parking and they hate the one-way streets." And over and over, throughout the years and years, there are different experts, but they are experts nonetheless, that tell us, "Councilmember, you're wrong." And we say, "Well, but the constituent said, 'I don't come downtown because of the parking and the one-way streets.'" And they said, "Well, that's not what the constituent said, the constituent is wrong." We hear over and over, and I've heard surprisingly from people who live in neighborhoods a mile from downtown, that they haven't been down here in decades. But when I communicate that to our experts, we are told that somehow that constituent is incorrect or doesn't understand or is wrong. I happen to believe the constituents that tell me that they don't come downtown, the primary reason is because of the parking. I believe them when they tell me that. I don't say, "No, you're deluded and wrong, you just have to try to park downtown." So I had a Twitter exchange with a constituent. Guy says, "I'm 27 years old, parking fees is the number one reason why I avoid downtown at all costs." And some guy comes on and goes, "Well, what's the number two reason?" And the guy says, "One-way streets." We've never done anything to alleviate the parking, we've never looked at one-way streets. And the guy goes, he's one of the downtown people, he uses a phony name, but he says, "Well, parking isn't that difficult. Those who complain are just unfamiliar. One figures it out after a couple of visits." Okay? And he says, "You have to realize that it's a downtown, it's urban and densely constructed." This is what I'm talking about, is that attitude that, "No, dude, you're wrong, you have to come down here and learn how to park and where to go and this and that." It's confusing for people and people who fail get the reward of a ticket. This is not a hospitable way to welcome people to our downtown. And unfortunately, today, what the council is doing is we're going to fiddle one more time. And that's the difference between the private sector and the public sector. The private sector builds the Edsel and when nobody buys the Edsel, they close a factory, a bunch of people are lost, they lose their jobs because Ford says, "We made a big mistake, we can't make any more Edsel's." Contrast that with government. "Well, the bombing in North Vietnam isn't working, we just need to bomb more." And that's the difference between the free market and the private sector and the government sector that doubles down on mistakes. And so I was going to read a quote out of my book, but I'm just going to sum it up very briefly, that we're in, we as a government are in something that's referred to as a previous investment trap. And a previous investment trap means that the investments that we've made in the past and the mistakes we've made in the past, we have to continue on the same course because of the mistakes we've made in the past. That's incorrect, that's a trap that we're in that we shouldn't be. The answer is to cut and run and get away from this. I've heard that the city, from Democrats and Republicans up here, that the city shouldn't be in the parking business. That's absolutely true. There has to be a free market solution to this. The city needs to get out of the parking business as quickly as possible. Look at the, when we got in the housing business, what happened to this, this item this morning. I don't buy the argument that nobody will buy the parking structure. There's, there are markets for garbage, there are markets for everything out there. Some investor would see our parking structures as a way to make money. And so I'll be voting against this today because I think that to continue to fiddle with it and tweak here and hope people come and, "Oh, well, maybe, you know, they'll, they'll get an hour free in the, in the structure," it's just not going to work. This isn't the way that we welcome people to downtown and unfortunately, I think it may be doomed to failure. And so with that, I'll call for a vote. The screen is clear, all those in favor?
Aye.
And all those opposed? No. Well, we got a four-three, so motion carries four-three. Thank you. And with that, we can move on. We just have one more item and then we can do closed session. Hopefully, we can do all this before lunch. This is item 4A for council boards and commissions, communications, reports, assignments. So this is just kind of a catch-all for boards and commissions, we have some, we have some empty. Oh, no. You want to do that? Let's do, did we do item 3H? Let's do 3H really quick. City manager, city manager's office, approve the sale. There we go. Thank you, Member Baines.
Good morning, Councilwoman Laura Gloria, City Manager's Office. The item that we bring forward today is the sale of the southwest corner of Herndon and Brawley for approximately $1.7 million. It is about 14.55 acres. The city owns the land free and clear and it is sold as is. Our staff is here if you have any questions.
Okay, we'll take it out to the public. Are there any members of the public? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. This is located in District 2.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Member Bretafeld, and we have some council members punched up, Member Baines and then Member Bretafeld.
So Bruce, is this, is this new money for the general fund?
Yes, this is new general fund money, and as the staff report indicated, it will be included in Mayor Brand's proposed FY18 budget.
I have a whole lot of thoughts about $1.7 million, so
I'm sure there's at least seven people up here who have all but a bunch of thoughts. But as I indicated, by the time escrow closes, and we recognize, actually receive and recognize the revenues, it would be prudent for, at least to let Mayor Brand identify this, as well as other sources of revenue, to include that in his proposed FY18 budget, like all the other money. That's in subject to further discussions amongst the council.
Okay. I don't have anything today, and you guys are probably lucky, but we definitely should have, how are we talking to Mayor Brand about this?
Again, this is, this is part of, this is part of, as, and our broker is here from CBRE, but if you recall, about a year ago, we entered into an agreement with CBRE, who's worked with us, identified some assets that we could sell to help generate one-time revenue. Again, it's one-time revenue. And so the item before you today is exactly consistent, or is consistent with that program. But again, it is one-time revenue, so in Mayor Brand's proposed budget, he will identify this, the use, and then again, like everything else, it will be subject to further discussion once we present that to you later this year.
Bretafeld, you're up.
Yeah, it is new money, and it's money from the sale of unused vacant city-owned land, and it's something that I talked a great deal about in my campaign, was selling unused vacant land, and mentioned the Blaszer property to hire police officers, firefighters, code enforcement officers, and I understand, of course, it is one-time money. And Mayor Brand also talked about selling unused vacant land, he's talked about hiring police officers to the limit of 1,000. And so, you know, it's my hope that this money is going to be used in that endeavor. He's talked about other things in terms of electronic billboards. One of the things we also need to talk about at some point, and I intend to bring forward and talk with Mayor Brand about, is selling naming rights to our convention center facilities, so that's an ongoing revenue stream, like big cities do, we ought to be doing that as well. But I'm delighted by this, this is fantastic. $1.7 million buys a lot of law enforcement, firefighters, code enforcement, and I'm sure, you know, other members have thoughts about how that money could be used, but I think public safety is where it needs to go, that needs to be our priority, and that's what I talked about, and that's what I also expect to have a conversation with the mayor about as well. Thank you.
Okay, there is, the screen is clear. We never, did I go out to the public on this? I did. So the screen is clear, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion to approve?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Oh, okay, Steve, okay, so, okay, we have, oh, that's right, motion to approve and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0, let's do, oh, 6-0. She's got it, you guys have it, you're the best. Let's do closed session, and then we can, huh? Oh, yeah, unscheduled communication. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the council on any item? Please come forward. Mark, please state your name and at, oh, you're, three minutes. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. City attorney, we're going to closed session.
Council President, did you want to do the committee item?
Oh, boards and commissions, yes. Does anybody want to do this now, or do you want to put it till next week? You know what, well, let's move it. I'm going to withdraw that item from the agenda, and then we'll deal with that some other time. City attorney?
Yes, in closed session, we have two items. The first is potential litigation, city versus Sharma, that's Hotel California, and the second is real estate negotiation concerning 1911 Merced, known as Lot 2. I would not expect, words.
I'm going to take care of you. And also wanted to remind everyone that the council's adjourning in memory of Barbara Lee Boran today, who passed away on December 29th at her home.